Okay. Hey, folks, it is seven o'clock and it is Tuesday, October 12th. We're in the council chambers of the city of Platteville. And I call this regular meeting of the common council to order. We'll start with roll call.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Yeah.
Kathy Kopp.
Here.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Lynn Parrott.
Yeah.
Isaac Shanley.
Here.
Barbara Dos.
Here.
The first item on our agenda tonight is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you would prefer separate discussion and action. First, we have the council minutes from September 28th. Payment of bills, the financial report for September, appointments to boards and commissions, and tonight I'm appointing Cindy Martins to the Water and Sewer Commission. Licenses, one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol as were itemized, and permits. There's a street closing permit for Main Street from Chestnut Street to Oak Street for sweet treats on Main, which will is scheduled for Saturday, October 30th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I've moved to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
And we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Ken to approve the consent calendar. We'll vote.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Kopp.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any, and I see no one has registered to speak. And so I think we'll move along then to the next item on our agenda, which are the reports. We have board commission and committee minutes from the redevelopment authority board. Eileen. From the plan commission, Isaac.
On the end.
I would only say we've had such scintillating discussions about noxious weeds that I wish you all could have been there, right? Isaac, I mean, yeah, yeah. And speaking of noxious weeds, I've met one recently. Historic preservation commission, Ken.
No additions.
Police and fire commission, Kathy.
Nothing further.
Okay, there were other reports in your packet, the water and sewer financial report for September and the airport financial report for September. Any questions on either of these two financial reports? Then we'll work, we'll move on to the task force on inclusion, diversity, and equity update. Any special mention, Adam?
No, I think just as it says, one of the things that the task force has started to look into is obviously homelessness in not only Grant County, but specifically with the city. So one of the things that they've started looking at is kind of a resource guide that essentially would have options, you know, potentially whether it would be places that somebody who's homeless can stay, businesses that would be able to potentially assist in some form or fashion, as well as other resources for mental health hospitals, et cetera, school districts, everything along those lines. So that's something that is going to be continually discussed by that group and kind of fine and fine tuned. And then potentially we'll come to the council as kind of a information, just so you guys can kind of see what they're working on. And then some of the more stuff internally that staff has been working on is potentially partnering with the school district has been using the Center for All. So that's one that we are going to be looking at, potentially that could do some various trainings and opportunities for city staff, and the council obviously would be invited to join those as well.
Okay, thank you. And then department progress reports. Any questions on any of the department progress reports?
I just have a quick question, maybe of Joe, I'm trying to find it. I'm curious about the building permits report for September. Indicated there were, I believe, ten new single-family residents building permits that were required. I'm just curious, are they homes that have been that the developer has sold? Do you know, or are they build being built on spec?
To my knowledge, they haven't sold any. They're they're just, that's the process that a company uses. They kind of do a production line. They come in and they start on one lot and they move to the next one until they get
Okay.
When the gentleman picked up the permits, I didn't think to ask him that, but he didn't indicate that they were sold. I just asked them timing wise, so I, I think he would have mentioned it if he had some pre-sold. Started here real soon.
Okay, so Joe, when you get a building permit for a house like this, it's good for a year or what?
For a new construction, it's two years.
Two years.
Are these next to the Walmart?
The state's at Keystone, yeah, behind Menards.
Menards, yes.
Yeah.
Well, that's good news. Any other questions on department progress reports? Okay, then we'll move on to our action agenda. The first of this on action agenda tonight is the Platteville Community Arboretum City Working Agreement for the David Ran- David Canny Roundtree Branch Trail.
Thank you. PCA and its partners diligently fundraised for the David Canny Roundtree Branch Trail in 2014. We have, we've been working under spoken agreements for trail maintenance. We need to put these in writing. A draft was brought to the council in July. The action was tabled on August 24th. And so prior to the discussion, a motion to remove from the table would need to be approved.
You could do that right now. Yeah, then, I mean, that's really before we, now you're going to discuss it. So the first thing is, do we have a motion to move the PCA City Working Agreement from the table to a discussion?
Moved.
All right, we have a motion by Jason and a second by Isaac to take this off the table. Candace will vote.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Kopp.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we can go ahead and proceed.
Sure. The PCA Board reviewed my recommended changes and they made a few changes. The new draft is acceptable to staff. Basically, if the prices for sealing the trail are over the $25,000, that would be allotted normally by the PCA in the city. The city can stretch the cycle to ensure funding by both the city and PCA are aligned in any given year. Currently, the city budgeted $1,000. That was a misunderstanding. It should have been 2,500. We are putting in a request for the 2,500, starting in the 2022 budget. And so staff recommends that that the council approve this working agreement. Bob Hundhausen, President of the PCA, is here in in the chambers, in case you have any questions for him.
Bob, would you like to come to the microphone in case somebody has questions? Hey, folks, this is the working agreement, and it said before that we would do this every five years. My understanding is now we're extending that so that if the monies don't cover that, we can go additional time. Is that right?
Correct. Yes, it's it's promising that that the PCA would commit up to 2,500 per calendar year to do, to match the city's commitment.
And in which of these bullet points is that? I've tried to find it. Is it in bullet point one?
Yes.
Okay, what's underlined forever? Okay. PCA is willing to extend its financial commitment to
incentivize.
Incent and encourage the city to fully seal the trail once every five years, as they and providers noted was and is necessary. Okay. Hey, folks, any other questions? Bob, any comments?
I think one of the things that Howard and I have been working through is previously, the 2,500 match from PCA was a kind of use it type thing in any given year, but the PCA Board has agreed that if it helps the city in any given time to get a better price on the overall ceiling of the trail, that PCA would, you know, if the city spent X in any given year, PCA would give that 2,500 in subsequent years until, until that match was was finished. That makes any sense to anyone.
Okay, so it's not like use it or lose it.
Right.
It's like, okay, we're not, we're not doing the trail this year. We get 2,500. Next year, we get 25 added to that, so that's 5,000. Right? Is that what you're telling me? It's going to accumulate from year to year?
Well, previously, and for example, this year, a portion of the trail was sealed. There was a repair on a large crack as well, which the city covered half of, and the PCA met half of that, which was, I think, around $1,000, $1,200 this year, and if, you know, in the past, if the city had done 10,000 any year, we would only match 2,500 of it. I think with the with the way we're we're working this now is if this, it makes sense for the city to do more in any given year that we would, we would give that $2,500 each year afterwards until, until we've met our portion of the match.
Understand that.
So they're not necessarily giving money every year?
That's correct.
Okay.
We we are building an endowment that is already at a point, we've raised enough funds to build our endowment that would, you know, allow us to meet that match almost indefinitely at this point.
Well, they have an endowment big enough to result in
It's not quite there yet, Barb, but we're well on it, on the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the city, would that $2,500 be a budget item every year then for the city?
Yes.
Okay.
But my question would be is where was the five, the every five years figure came up with them? We've got some city trails, asphalt trails in town that, you know, haven't, and these are full city ones that haven't been touched at all over 10 years and are still in good shape. So what would make us go down to an area there that's, you know, traffic that, okay, now we want to do this every five years?
Yeah, and Howard may be able to answer this better than than me, because I wasn't around when the, when these agreements were first put out, but when PCA raised the funds for the, for the David Canny Roundtree Branch Trail, you know, that was part of the original approval by the city, I believe, was that city would would do its best to seal that trail every five, every five years.
The the parts do its best is is pretty accurate right there. What it was is that the the folks with the PCA asked what the ideal situation would be, and the ideal situation, if time and budget allowed, would be to seal a trail like that every five years. I think some thought that that was a hard and firm commitment, but you know, as as Bob noted, we would do our best to to get it sealed when it needed it, and, you know, we're trying to incentivize doing that and working with the PCA to match the monies put in by the city to make that happen.
Kathy.
Question is, where 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 does the money from the city, is that under the parks? Or is that Public Works Parks?
It's been, it's been allocated under the parks operational budget.
Okay, other questions?
Oh. It's not really keep it simple. Every year, the city is, is the desire is that the city allocate or gives 2,500 for five years, and then on the fifth year, the trail is repaired. Is that what, is that, am I losing?
Not necessarily. We we have a line item in our budget for trail maintenance that we're asking for 2,500 for, and that covers all sorts of trail maintenance items, one of them being seal coating. And so, you know, what what I try to do, and I try to go out and get bids for seal coating, the the trails. And so I try to divide things up into logical segments so that we can get you know, portions of this done. And what we're, what we're trying to come up with is that, you know, if if we decide, say, in 2022, we have budget authority from the council to do $6,000, for example, worth of of seal coating, because it makes sense to do that much this year. The city would have to fund it upfront. We would get 2,500 this year from the PCA, and we would get 500 next year from the PCA to cover that, to cover their $3,000 match. Conversely, we could, we could continue to break it up and just do 2,500 a year. It just might not be logical segments. There may be little pieces and parts, whichever way we, you know, it it doesn't, it doesn't change the commitment by by the PCA either way.
Hey, folks, any more questions? Are you ready? Take action. I moved to approve the PCA City Working Agreement for the David Canny Roundtree Branch Trail. Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Lynn to approve this working agreement between PCA and the city for the Roundtree Branch Trail. Candace will vote.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Kopp.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Parrott. Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to PCA for bringing this great amenity to our city. It is a great amenity. Okay, item B under our action, I, our action agenda is a resolution to set a public hearing date for a street discontinuance, or the proposal of a street discontinuance. Joe.
Yes, so a quick trip incorporated in Coons Country are working on some plans to do redevelopment of the land bordering Hubersocks Drive. And part of that desire is to have that street discontinued, which would give them some more flexibility on redevelopment of that property. So kind of the the beginning part of the process, it's kind of a very lengthy process due to public hearing notice requirements. So the first step is to set a public hearing at least 40 days in advance of the date when the decision is going to be made. So that's what this evening is for, and then we go through the required public hearing notices and so forth. So the the date for the public hearing would be November 20.
What was the end of?
That that would be the request is to set the date for November 20.
Kind of dropped off at the end, didn't it?
Sorry.
And we didn't know what, I didn't hear what you were saying. So this is merely, this is not a request to discontinue the streets. This is simply a request to set November 23rd as the date of a public hearing.
Correct.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
A motion to approve the setting of a public hearing for November 23rd, 2021, to consider the discontinuation of Hubersocks Drive.
I'll second. Okay, Candace will vote.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Kopp.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that completes the action items on our agenda tonight, so we will move on to information and discussion. The first of these is the redistricting map, and I believe Candace, this is your your area.
Thank you very much. I have JS Specialist Chris with me as well tonight.
Pardon me?
I have GIS Specialist Chris.
Yeah, yes.
Yep, with me as well tonight. He is the one that put together the maps that you have in front of you. So if you have any specific questions about mapping, he would be better to answer those. All right, so redistricting. Redistricting is the process by which electoral district boundaries are redrawn periodically to adjust for the shifts in population and to ensure proper representation to all potential voters in a given geographic area. Redistricting takes place every 10 years. It follows the census and is accomplished by states adjusting the congressional and legislative legislative district boundaries, counties adjusting county supervisory districts boundaries, and municipalities adjusting ward boundaries based on the new census data. On October 5th, 2021, as you'll see there, that's not that long ago, the Grant County Board approved a tentative supervisory district map. So using the census data, the tentative supervisory district map and statutory guidance, city staff developed a proposed city of Platteville map, which you have in front of you, and on the bottom it does say proposed map only in red in the bottom right-hand corner. So we, that updates the city's wards and Alderwick District boundaries. And we tried to make it so that all the, it's different shades of blue, but that's because it decide, you know, distinguishes between the different wards, but all of blue is District One. The pink shades are District Two, the green shades are District Three, and the orangish-yellow gold color is District Four. The airport is Ward Nine. That's also a part of District Four. It's just south, obviously, of this map that's pictured here. Nobody lives at the airport, so that does not necessarily have any bearing on the population numbers for us. So the boundaries, the boundary descriptions have been drafted according to the proposed map and updated within the attached ordinance. Due to the complications from the COVID-19 pandemic, the federal government's release of census population data in 2021 was significantly delayed, resulting in a very compressed redistricting timeline for all counties and municipalities. The key deadline is publication of a notice of election, which must be published by the Fourth Tuesday in November. For the city of Platteville, this equates to submission to the city's official newspaper, which is the Platteville Journal, on Monday, November 15th, in order to be have that published in time according to the statute. So below, we kind of tried to just give you a snapshot of what we are looking for, looking at as our proposed timeline. Obviously, the October 5th date has already come to pass. Today, we are here in the October 12th to be in front of you as information discussion. The next one will be the public hearing that we've scheduled for October 26th. This then goes back to the Grant County Board meeting to, so that hopefully they can finalize their supervisory districts, and they have to do that by November 9th. November 15th, that's the date I just recently talked about, where we have to send that type A notice to for the spring primary elections to the newspaper. November 23rd is when the county clerk has to submit the overall final map to the state. And December 1st is the first day that nomination papers can be circulated. So as you can see, we have a very compressed time schedule here. The timeline above incorporates guidance from the city attorney, the, excuse me, the city attorney to integrate proposed wards, the districts, and the polling place changes all in one ordinance. In the past, we've done this by a resolution first that spells out all of our wards that go back to the county. They would look at that, and then it comes back to us. Then we would establish through ordinance. So first was the resolution with the wards, and then the ordinance would establish the polling places and the district lines. Like I said, guidance from the attorney, because we have such a compressed time schedule, is that he's suggesting we do it all together in one ordinance. So that's why we are doing it that way. So as part of the redistricting process, the assignment of wards to city polling locations was reviewed. Myself and as well as other staff and chief election inspectors met together, and we looked at how the city responded to carrying out elections during during a pandemic. The location of populations with like demographics and how just to better serve the voters of the city of Platteville. We are proposing to have wards one, two, three, and four vote at the Broski Center, and wards five, six, seven, eight, and nine vote at Alsvick Hall. So in effort to have an ongoing communication with easy access to all of, all of the community members and have everybody be able to kind of access this in real time as this is developing, we have put together a dedicated page on the city's website, and we are already putting information on there. Right now, it contains just kind of information about the process itself, and then also these maps that we've shared with you, you know, definitely letting them know they're just in draft form at this point. But that's what we'd be looking to do as proposed. Any questions with that?
One question I would have is that county prepares the supervisory maps, and then we have to use whatever they have developed as a supervisory map when we develop our wards.
Correct.
So, okay, so the county really controls that process?
Correct. Yeah, we don't, it's not, it's not going, it's not not an ongoing conversation between the county and municipalities or the villages, towns in the county. It's the county just looks at it themselves, and then it gets distributed out to the municipalities, and then we move forward with our
So then you move forward with dividing up your city, but based on their supervisory districts?
Correct. And I can definitely let Chris speak to this a little bit more, but if you look at the charts, it kind of shows your different population numbers, you can see that he took the supervisory districts, and when he was drawing out the wards, that he tried to make it so that the populations were even between the wards. You'll notice that the blue, so districts, or excuse me, wards one and two are a little bit lower than the rest of the wards. And if you look at your supervisory district map, you'll notice that the blue area goes out into the township, so it's capturing some of that population in the township. That's where you're getting additional numbers, so it looks like our city numbers are a little lower in that district, whereas the other supervisory districts within the city are just within the city, if that makes sense.
So the reason, you're saying the reasons wards one and two have less population is because the supervisory district is big enough, but the wards that some of those people live outside, and that's why it's, I, I wondered why it was, you know, 500 to 600, 600 less people.
Right.
So you started with the supervisory map and then developed our maps. Okay. Sounds good.
Get a question?
Isaac?
Candace, I guess I do, so.
Sure.
How does this affect Barb?
So that's a very good question, and I think we gave Barb a heart attack probably on Friday.
No, actually, I had such a great weekend.
So this is, this is obviously the concern that's been brought up by multiple municipalities, and I think kind of to Council President Dos's point is typically, there is a much longer timeframe that municipalities have the ability to see the map from the county and express concerns. Now, again, those concerns, you have to be very careful. It can be, for instance, what and express concerns. Now, again, those concerns, you have to be very careful. It can be, for instance, what happened to Council President Dos is a hard argument to say, well, you need to change the map so that she now is back in this district. It has to be more because of the population or because of something, there has to be a substantial reason to make that change. So if you've probably noticed by looking at this, essentially by the new map that was created, Council President Dos is no longer in District Three. What we had to look at was originally, when we were kind of reviewing things, we thought, okay, that might mean that in two thousand twenty two, she has to make a decision in regards to running at large or potentially not running at all. What we did find out, and kind of looking in with both Collette and Candace and Clerk's perspective, this is, there is precedent that was set by law and also by state statute that essentially what happens now is Council President Dos is able to fill out her entire term. She will still be representing District Three, and then when her term expires, which would be in two thousand twenty four, she will have to make a decision then in regards to either she has to move back into District Three if she wants to represent District Three, or potentially would have to run as an at-large member again. But essentially with state statute, she is allowed to, that person or that individual is able to fill out their entire term just representing the district, because again, originally she was elected or that person was elected in that district, so they're still representing the needs. So that's kind of how it plays out now.
And just so you understand, it wasn't, Council President Dos was not the only one that was actually affected and changed. There are two other members, so I would encourage you just to kind of look at your lines as far as.
Oh, two other members of the council are also affected?
Correct. So obviously, you certainly, we do not, you know, put your houses on a map and then draw the map. We certainly cannot do that. And unfortunately, this happens under municipalities, this happens in the county, this has happened. I understand that it's not really what everybody wanted, but unfortunately, it really is just the numbers that are looked at. In fact, when Chris started this, he didn't have any clue as to where anybody lived or anything, and he literally just did it based on the population, which is exactly how it's supposed to be done. So, yeah, it definitely, it may change how maybe people run for different positions. It may, you know, stir up some interest in, in different folks in the community. So it can definitely be a positive thing that's occurring, but unfortunately, we do have to do this every ten years, so here we are.
So I have a question, and that is, they haven't finished redistricting of the, of the state.
Right.
Does that affect this?
That actually, I was reading about that today, that might not actually be done until next fall. I don't.
You mean a year from now?
Correct.
Oh.
And I do not believe that that would.
Okay.
Essentially.
I just didn't, didn't.
Change anything that we have done. And it's my understanding that once you guys adopt this ordinance, that is what it is for the City of Platteville, and that is just what gets sent to the county, and they can't go back and change it either. And just to sort of put a little bit more perspective on this timeline, so six days ago, we were given the tentative map from the county, so we had six days to put this together. We should have had sixty. So that is how much this timeline has been very much compressed.
Okay, so clarify then the proposed city timeline. On October twenty sixth, it's not just a proposed public hearing, but it's also a vote on the map. Is that correct?
It's correct, that it is a public hearing on the proposed map. We're voting, you'd be voting on the map that says proposed map only at the bottom, as well as the ordinance that is in your packet.
Okay, so then it goes back to the Grant County Board to finalize their new supervisory districts.
Correct.
So if we have voted based on this proposed map, and they changed their supervisory districts, I have no clue what their process is.
I don't believe they can change any of them once we have adopted ours. That is my understanding.
Yeah, so if that were to occur, and this is again, where because they're on such a truncated timeline, I would be shocked if that happened. But if they did, then essentially there has to be some opportunity then to obviously show the municipalities if it's been impacted or not. So then that's where we'd have to figure out what, what that would mean, because then, I mean, essentially, as it says, you got to have it figured out by December first, so.
I, I don't, I don't know much about supervisory districts or who represents who, but I have heard a little rumbling in the county that there are people who are not comfortable with this new
Yeah.
supervisory district map, and I don't know if it means it's Platteville, or if it means it's all the county in together, or what it means.
Right.
So I just, I just wanted to clarify, we really need to vote, not just have a public hearing on the proposed map, but a public hearing that closes and has action afterwards.
Yes.
And if they take different action on the ninth, then we're, then the game changes again.
Correct.
But we don't have a clue what that game might be yet, or if it would change.
Right.
Okay. Well. Okay. Candace, did you have something else?
No, I was just discussing with Chris, but I believe that once you guys have voted on this and you've taken action and you've, you've said this is the map that we are going forward with, I don't believe the county can change any of this. It's, the reconciliation is not back to them. It's to us only, so if you wanted to change this map, then it would have to go back to them, and then they would have to change it and then have to come back to us. Unfortunately, we, we don't have that timeline in order to be able to do that. That's why it comes to us this way.
Are you telling me that we could change the supervisory district lines?
It's not what I'm recommending, but it's definitely something that could be done.
Interesting. Oh, well, interesting. Okay. Well, guys, take a look, and we'll have this on for a public hearing at our next meeting, and I guess if you want to propose a change to the supervisory districts at that time, you can. From what it sounds like. And then we would send that back to the county, which I I just think would be interesting. Okay. Okay. Any other questions on our redistricting and ordinance twenty one oh eight? Alderwick districts, any, any any comments on the change in polling place for so many people? I mean, basically, three quarters of the city was voting either at the Armory or most, most recently at the, at the Broski Center. This would put it about half and half.
Correct.
At the Broski and at the, at the Allsick Center. Has this, I will ask, has the university been consulted or told this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's something that I did discuss with them, and they definitely have the space. It's actually something that they approached me on at the last, I would say, is probably the presidential election. They wanted to know if they could basically move District Four at that point in time, and I couldn't do that, so.
Right. Okay. So that, as long as they've been approached, and will this, you know, I would assume you're not going to need any additional voting machines or anything.
No.
That you would just move the ones that were used for those two wards to the other location. Okay. Any other questions? Kathy?
I have a question, but a comment because of the timeline. Is there anything additional that the city can do to make sure the public is aware that October twenty sixth, there is a public hearing? I mean, it's, some of the public hearings we've had are not well-attended, and this could be a significant change, so. I'm just encourage whatever we can do because it's, it's really coming fast.
Yeah, there's a dedicated page that's been created, so now the steps are, obviously, it'll be in the paper, so people will see that, but we'll make sure from a communication standpoint that we'll get it into the spotlight section of the website, obviously put it on Facebook now that kind of these dates have been set to make sure that point, to your point is valid, Kathy, is that, again, we want to make sure that people are aware, and if they have questions, there's a mechanism for comments and ability to show up and voice those concerns.
All right, well, that's, that's redistricting. Let us move along then to resolution lot two, Mineral Street Parking Lot Hour Change.
Yes, thank you. Back in two thousand eighteen, Common Council designated assigned parking stalls in various lots downtown. One of the provisions was that any unassigned parking stalls would be designated as no parking from three AM to six AM. And one of those lots happens to be lot two, Mineral Street, the one behind you, bounded by Mineral Street between Third and Fourth Streets. The owner of Platteville Cycling and Fitness has a fitness class that starts at five thirty AM for safety reasons, as well as convenience. For that routine, they would like to have parking nearby. And the Main Street Executive Director also endorses the request. If the request is not granted, customers would be required to park in lots seven and eight at Furnace and Fourth Streets, or on streets either north of Furnace or south of Pine Street to be able to take advantage of that. The owner has said that many customers would opt to go elsewhere rather than park that far away, which would negatively impact the business. Currently, there are twenty-five unassigned stalls in lot two. The main reason for having no parking is to allow for maintenance, especially snow removal. If we were to reduce the no parking from three hours to two hours, that would mean that we would need to readjust our scheduling to attempt to clear the snow in a smaller time windows for this one particular lot. I'm sure that there would be some training for officers as well. There would be minor costs involved in changing the signage to designate the new parking hours, and so we're proposing that you recommend, we're recommending approval of this resolution to change that no parking. I believe we have the owner and the Main Street Executive Director here in, in the audience, in case you have any questions of them.
Okay, folks, questions, comments?
Is, is there a turn of cost, how much would that cost to change signs and the D, how much would that cost?
What we're going to attempt to do is just take, take a little sticker and cover the six with a five. And if we can do that, it'll be very minimal. I believe that there are four four locations. There's a double-sided sign on the east side and on the west side of the lot that we would just have to do that. If, if we can't make that happen, then it's a small sign. It's about yay wide by about yay high that we would have to do on both sides. You know, probably less than a hundred dollars for, for both sides double-sided.
Okay, and you said my biggest concern is snow removal. I mean, one of the reasons we have the three to six PM, three, three AM to six AM time period is to allow for snow removal. So this, this now will require adjustment, period.
Correct.
Okay, and is this forever? If this business relocates to someplace off of Main Street, would we expect to change this back? So it's three to six, like, so is this a single business accommodation, or?
At this point, it appears to be a single business accommodation. I don't know, maybe Main Street has other businesses that have a similar have a similar.
Tammy, do you want to come to the microphone, please?
Yeah, I don't know if there are any other businesses right now.
Start by introducing.
Okay. Tammy and some Main Street Director. And to the point of other businesses downtown with those early morning hours. I'm not aware of anything right now that is open that early.
Any other people with questions?
I have a question. Tammy, how many clients or customers are we talking about at five thirty in the morning?
I, I think Addie could speak better to that.
I know I'm not one of them.
I'm Addie. I.
Addie, I need your first name and your last name.
Adely Graffin. I own Platteville Cycle. Okay. I have ten clients and then one instructor at that time.
And then a question, what if things would go along with what you brought up, Barb, as far as what happens if there's a change? For example, right now, there's twenty-five unassigned stalls. What if all of a sudden the city gets a request for another twenty? I mean, where is the priority given for?
That would be up to the Common Council. You know, at this point, we do not have people on waiting lists for assigned parking stalls. I don't believe, I'd have to look at my notes again. In the past, we've had two or three. Most of them, most of them, if they have had requests, would prefer the Pine Street Parking Lot over by the post office that any of those people who are waiting for stalls. But you're right, that, that would be a, a common council decision as to what to prioritize. Like I say, we've got twenty-five unassigned stalls. What she's saying is there could be up to eleven using those stalls for this purpose.
I know there would be an understanding with those clients then, that they cannot park on Main Street.
Correct. We already are trying, we already stay off of Main Street. And actually, when I moved into the building, I just, it every, all happened so fast, and I'm not familiar with down here, that I had no clue. And I maybe would have chose not to be on Main Street because of it, but I just didn't look into it enough. But I have to say, I'm, the town and Main Street has been so supportive, and I'm so thankful, and I just really, really hope we can stay. We have restrictions on how long you can park in a, in the parking lot. If I park my car at five AM, can I leave it there all day?
Yes. The, one of the main reasons for the unassigned stalls in this parking lot are, are for employees and, and such for the downtown area. So it was, it was decided that, that this particular lot would be just the no overnight parking for the snow removal and, and everything else, but allow that long-term parking for, for employees and, and folks like that to reserve the, the timed parking spots on Main Street for customers.
It's my, excuse me, however, I guess my only comment is if we're going to change the sign for a hundred dollars, let's change the sign the correct way, not just throw a piece of tape on it. You know, trying to improve downtown, make it look better, that just to me would start to look tacky, so.
Right, it looks like I can go and peel it off. Right. Yeah, and, and I guess the, the other thing, I, I understand your business, and we certainly are glad you're in Platteville. I'm, I always, when we do these kinds of things, I get concerned about precedent, so, you know, one business comes in and says, change it to five o'clock, and the next business comes in and says, well, now I need it, I need it to, you know, I needed it a different lot, and I need it at four thirty, and then pretty soon we have snowplows and other things that can't get along. So I think we just have to think about further ramifications relative to that.
Okay.
Okay. This will be on the agenda for our next meeting as an action item, so if you have any other concerns, questions, or whatever for lot two, Mineral Street Parking Lot Hour Change, please get in touch with Adam and/or. Please get in touch with Adam and or Howard if you have any additional suggestions as to how that might be handled. Again. Let them know that also. All right. Nice to meet you and thank you, Tammy. I think the next thing on our agenda are council rules. Aren't we done with those yet?
We are, sort of. It's up to you guys. You get to make that decision. So pretty much we have gone through all of the rules. One of the ones that was kind of outstanding was in regards to rule number. Believe it was fourteen. So that's the one really that we're here to talk about tonight. So if you remember, Rule Number fourteen currently states the following, it shall be in order for any member voting in the majority to move for reconsideration of the vote. Of any question except confirmation of the appointment of city officials at that meeting or at the next succeeding regular meeting. A motion to reconsider being put in law shall not be renewed. I think as we've all agreed, as we've looked at that, that's very confusing and a bit, it's just confusing, that's the way to put it. So the request was for me to kind of take a stab at looking at potentially how that could be rewritten. So what I have here is essentially the first attempt at a set revision where it would read now, Rule Number fourteen would be. A matter that was voted on can be brought back again through a motion to reconsider. This motion must be made with a within a limited time after the action on the original motion, either on the same day. Or at the next succeeding regular common council meeting. The motion to reconsider may be made and seconded only by members who voted on the prevailing side of the original vote. In parentheses, such as someone who voted yes if the motion was passed or voted no if the motion was defeated. The making of the motion to reconsider takes precedent over all other motions. It is not, however, considered at the time it is made if other business is pending. If the motion cannot be considered at that time it is made, a member could call up the motion to reconsider when it is appropriate to do so. So. What that really is trying to do is essentially say this. Let's say we're talking about the budget and all of a sudden a council member decides, well, I want to reconsider something that happened, whatever it is. Let's say it was a tree that was cut down. I know this is an example. Well, if you're talking about the budget and you're actually in a motion to approve the budget or adopt the budget, that probably is not the most appropriate time to go back and start talking about a previous issue. So that's where what that is talking to is basically is the council, you can say, no, we're not going to do that. But we'll consider it here, either after we've had this discussion or not. But essentially what it means is whatever that motion was, whatever the decision was made. In order for it to be brought back for discussion at the council level, it has to be done by two members of whichever way it was voted on. So if it was in the affirmative, it was approved, you need two people, whoever, you need two people from the majority that voted for that action. If it was to deny something or for something not to be approved, again, you need two members from the majority of that party. That's essentially what this now puts together.
And if you weren't here at all, you can't make a motion to reconsider.
Right.
So the only time and and the motion to reconsider has to, so if we take action tonight on something. And people change their mind later, they could make a motion to reconsider for at the next meeting.
Correct.
Or they could at the next meeting ask.
For it to be reconsidered, to be put on the agenda for.
But not the meeting after that.
Nope. Essentially, it's a, it's either you have to do it at the meeting that it happened. Or at the next meeting. If you don't, your ability to bring it back is gone. Right.
Right. Does this seem like better wording to people?
Yeah, the only, Adam, the the sentence. That's confusing to me is it is not, however. Considered at the time it is made if other business is pending. What would be the other business pending?
So this is kind of the example I gave. So let's say we're talking about the budget and it's you're currently in that motion is to approve the bu, either to approve or deny the budget. You then cannot, it would not be appropriate to bring up a motion to reconsider any other topic because you're in that topic of the budget. So that's kind of what that's referring to is.
So by agenda item.
It's a, or or any agenda item. So it's kind of, if you have an agenda item that is considered pressing, you have, you know, you can't do it during that item. It has to be. You know, during citizen comments, during, you know, when there isn't, when you're not in an agenda item, those would be the correct. That's where it's the council, you could say, this isn't the appropriate time to discuss that. We're gonna do this.
Adam, is there a way of taking out the? The limited time, because you have the limited time, then you proceed to go on to either the same day or the next succeeding regular motion.
Yeah, I don't have any, I mean.
It's like you're saying two different things.
Right.
So we take portion of that line off and just leave the portion where it says either on the same day or at the next succeeding regular common council.
Sure. So it would be this motion must be made either on the same day or at the next. We can just delete that whole sentence. That's fine.
Well, it has to be made after the action on the original motion.
Correct.
Yeah. Either on the same day or at the next succeeding meeting. That seems reasonable.
So then the next question, I guess, for the council is, do you feel this is ready now to go to action? And what I will do is kind of put together. Everything we've been discussing over the last couple of meetings. Now, more than likely, again, this is not something that goes into, would not go into effect till January, so we do have some time on this. This is not, you know, with all of our budget meetings, it may take a backseat for a little bit. Just so that we can ensure that, but essentially the next time this would come in front of the council would be as a potential action item for approval.
I I would suggest that the next time it come with all of this stuff removed, it come on the information agenda.
Yep, sure.
Just because we've talked about a lot of things over a lot of meetings.
Yep.
So maybe we want to make sure they go back. So after they're rewritten, I would say. When the tag chapter two is rewritten.
Yep.
That it come on for information. People can say, oh, I forgot that. Oh, I didn't, I've changed my mind on that. Oh, we should have done that.
Yep.
And then the subsequent meeting for action. So I think we'll see it twice, one in, one is, one in its revised. Final form.
Yep, sounds good.
Or proposed final form. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Great. This has been, it's been such an exercise. Okay. All right. I guess we're ready to move on to our twenty twenty-one financial management plan, and I see that Dave has arrived, so. We'll give him the podium. And all of you can watch the beautiful. PowerPoint.
Would it be permissible for me to to present without a mask?
Sure.
Long time, and I'm probably gonna dip into my water. Probably gonna talk more than you want me to, and I'm gonna dry out, so.
You even get, you even get to change the slides yourself now.
I know.
I mean, wow, we're a permissive group tonight.
You show up late and you get power, right? Well, thank you for letting me present again this year. It's, I think this is like our third time doing it. This time around, though, Dawn has finally retired, so I've I've stepped in. For your job, and so this will be my time to go through it. Brian Raymer is with me tonight, but he'll be doing the Utility Commission meeting, I think tomorrow. Is it just the middle button? So we have the agenda we're going to talk about tonight. So you have. Items in front of you, the background, highlights of the bond rating, observations compared to prior plan. We'll go through the capital projects, which actually going to have both, we're gonna have three different versions of that. We'll go through what I think. Adam presented as the all in version first, just to kind of show you what that looked like. But at the back of the presentation, we have. Two different versions where we're kind of looking more at what if we increase the the levy rate by three percent? What if we reduce the levy rate by five percent? How does that affect things? And so we've got the charts that you'll see in the all in version updated for those that kind of gives you an idea of what that capital plan does. And also kind of. The all in obviously has a change in how you've been doing your debt. Your debt issues. I think even with the with the standard, what your policies are, plan, that you have a chance that you could potentially. Increase how much you're borrowing anyways. Nicola and I kind of did a, you know, I think it was a couple of months ago, but we kind of looked at a few things on what we could do. To maybe increase how much we're doing. And so if you don't end up doing the all, and I think there's another. Potential approach that maybe you could do a little bit more in projects as well. So we want to talk about that today, but I think that's something that there's possibility to consider in the future. The general fund will go through that projection. Levy limits, how how this plan affects that, the the effect on the tax rates, and then just some summary comments. And like I said, we'll go over those. Scenarios at the end. I won't take credit for this slide, but I'll talk for this. This is actually a slide that is the city slide that we we go through each year, but you have your budget components. Your expenditures are made up. You were operating budget. We pull in the CIP, the debt service and the TIF districts, which the TIF districts at this point are are starting, and we'll go through that that packet at the end, but the TIF districts are starting to become less of a burden on you. We're not looking at tax levy support anymore. So on this, on this slide, with what we're looking at for this plan, really that TIF district part could actually fall off of this slide because it's not affecting your your actual direct property tax to your resident. So the parts that go from the the financial management plan, what we're looking at is we, we asked the the city provide us with a list of projects, and then we kind of funnel all of this through. A a plan just to kind of get to some answers. And so we've got the, we start with the CIP that funnels into your capital projects plan. It kind of shows what we're gonna borrow. We have a policy, obviously, that says we're only gonna borrow as much as we pay off. That's something that you're probably gonna be looking at a little bit, and I know your all in plan had a lot bigger borrowings, a lot bigger projects that. So that plan goes into the capital projects fund. We try to determine our, what our funding sources are and how we're gonna. Fund those projects. Then as far as other funds that have levies, we've got the general fund for operating purposes. We've got a little bit that's in the taxi. That's pretty consistently budgeted over the next few years. And then the debt service, you know, what you've borrowed, how much you need to actually levy to pay for that debt service. So a key ingredient to this plan is how much is the equalized value? We'll show you a graph. We have a pretty conservative growth rate just because we want to, we don't want to project that we're gonna have all this growth and and say we're gonna do all these projects and then find out we don't have the growth to do that. We can't pay for it in our tax rate. You know, it probably is only as high as it goes with levy limits, but you know, it kind of gives you a little bit more conservative approach to it. So that, like I said, that goes into a tax levy and rate forecast, and then out of the whole shebang comes the. Effect on levy limits, how we're using fund balance or or potential ways to use fund balance, and then the expenditure restraint program. Goals of the plan. What we're trying to do here really is we're trying to get. A plan that our tax rate really is kind of stabilizing, and we don't have big bounces in it. You know, if we have tax bills going out that are going up one year and going down next year, probably staff is getting yelled at. Fairly handily from from people that are seeing that kind of a roller coaster of tax rate. So what we're trying to have you think about is how do we establish a stabilized tax rate? Get all of our services in, do our improvements, and not have people coming in here and complaining about what they're paying for. The financial management plan is a way for you to, you know, you're you're gonna go into your budget discussion night. So this is a perfect time for us to come out. It just happened to work out really good. You're gonna see some of the pressure points here, how things may be affected with how you, how your capital plan has been kind of approved. And it'll help you make some decisions on what what you can do and what you can't do. And as I said, it helps identify some of those pressure points. So you'll see in some of the options where the levy limits is affected, and and you're gonna have to make some decisions to make things. So we're going to talk a little bit about the bond rating and and, you know, we went out for a couple of issues this spring or this fall. As far as the general obligation, I think even the utilities, I think we stay, did we get upgraded in utilities? Trying to think if that was someplace else, but the general fund maintained its double A minus. It was affirmed at that. And so, you know, S and P. Gets on a line with elders and and the city staff, and they do a really good job of talking about what's going on and and some of the potential growth that's going on here. And so they go through all these different categories where they have questions on on some of the things, so they can fill in their model and see, you know, are you still a double A minus? You know, what would make you go up, what would make you go down? And so just to kind of give you brief things on what makes things up. Institutional framework is kind of a weird title, and really what it is, is in in the state of Wisconsin, everybody is basically a an A. Level rating, so just a single A, and you're in the double A's. What it really is geared towards is what kind of holds you back on things. So you've got levy limits, you're held in place, you've got TIF districts that could affect you. And so Moody's and Standard and Poor's basically rate every municipality in Wisconsin as an A. So that's kind of always a standard for that one. The economy, we're gonna look at, you know, how are things going as far as medium? Income levels, what's your value as far as the city's value management would be what you're doing for things like. Financial management plans, policies and that kind of thing. Financial measures are looking at your fund balance. They're looking at how your budget comes out. Do you typically have a surplus? If you don't have a surplus, what is causing that? Sometimes we can explain that we have a policy that we transfer excess fund balance to the capital projects fund, and so it might look like we don't have any kind of a positive impact. National statements, but yet we've got a policy where it it shows we had positive, but we move it out to the capital fund to help fund the projects or reduce your borrowings. And then budgetary flexibility really is, you know, if you budget, are you able to have little things here and there where there's other places in the budget that maybe help you recover? And then debt and contingency liabilities is, you know, how much debt you have, you have a debt capacity level that's established by state statutes, where are you compared to that, et cetera. As far as your actual rating, you were rated a double A minus stable. Most of these items that are listed here are the same as last year. However. As Nicola pointed out to me, I I, when I was filling out the sheet, I actually didn't move up the strong budgetary performance. I believe that was the one, wasn't it? I, it was under adequate a year ago. They had put that down in adequate a year ago, and they moved you back up. So you did actually have a a step up. On one of the items that had been moved down the year before. So one of those items actually made them decide that. You know, the way you're budgeting obviously was stronger looking than the year before. And then the only weak thing that that you really can't do anything about except to get a bunch of rich people to move into town. Is that your, your, you know, your median income is is, you know, like a certain percent of the national average. And so that kind of is something they take into account. As far as the weak debt and contingent liability position. I, you know, anybody that's doing any kind of borrowing for projects or has growth going on, you'll see that there's always a problem with debt being a a bigger burden, they'll say. But if you can handle it, your growth is handling it and and your policies are keeping you honest. That shouldn't really hold you back from keeping your your bond rating. So as far as what could change the rating up, you know, I think the equalized value of the city. Is like one of the first things to look at. So you got to have enough value. You had to be in line with that double A without the minus or the plus, that next level for you would be double A, and it's kind of. Where do you line up as if you are? And then all the other factors that we talked about, the percentage of that, you know, where do you? There. So there's chances for you to to maybe move up, and what they're saying here is that, you know, your key indicators. Need to move up substantially. And so right now they're saying higher rated peers have better looking. Markers, but you know, not to say the double A minus is bad, that's, you actually have a pretty good rating. So as far as what could rate, bring it down, I think it's just the opposite of what they say on the top one is is if you're not maintaining a balanced budget or or you have. The loss of that budgetary flexibility, they think that that could hurt you. And I I think your policies are in place that that's not going to be an issue. So as long as you pay attention to what. The factors are and and how you budget, I think you're in good shape. Now, why is a rating important? Basically, we took the rates on the day that we sold your bonds for general vacation debt, and we said, okay, how do those rates compare for a B double A, an A, a double A, and a triple A? And you can see there's kind of a difference between each line with the triple A being the lowest interest rates and the double A being the next one. So you can see there's a benefit to having a better high, a better. Bond rating. So how did that translate into your bond issue is what we scheduled out on the next page. What we did is we took the schedule on the left is how you actually came out. And and so those were the rates that we got. We got a little bit of premium which helped us pay for the interest in the first couple of years. That's the the. That's the the underwriters way of kind of making things a little bit more saleable. Because they can, they can make the rates look to the investor like they're better than they are. So even though it says 2% there on that first line, if we actually go to your yield from what we got from the day that you sold. That's probably more like 0.2%. So there's, it's a way that they can kind of prop up the interest rate. It makes it look more attractive to the to the buyers of the bonds. So but using those rates that we had on sale day, the difference between the A and the double A that I showed you on the last page. Is only 0.12%, but that's 0.12% better than you would have done if you were in the A ratings. Last year, when I was here, it was actually 0.23%. So those have narrowed a little over the last year, but you're still, you know, you're saving, you know, about $17,000 in comparison. Just from that. And and that's only taken into account like the general category, not the minus or the plus. So you know, if you're double A plus and you're comparing to an A minus, it'd probably be a much larger savings. But at at this point, you would have saved about, you know, $17,000 on interest. So the historic issues, I think we pretty much every year we talk about these and maybe it's something that could drop out of the. Out of the presentation, but I, you know, maybe it kind of brings you back to why you started doing this. And one of the reasons is that, you know, when you, when others first did this financial management plan for you a couple of years ago. You had had an underwriter that used to do 10 year debt with big balloons and and it really. It really kind of hurt your structure and your tax rate. And so there was a lot of, it was really hard to get a good look at the future. And and you were tied into these big balloon payments out there. So. What you ended up doing is having us kind of take a look at the structure, come up with a stable tax rate. And so the plan has helped you really kind of pull together. Where you should go in the future as far as borrowing. You know, the TID borrowing was really kind of a, the structuring of how the TID borrowing was in the early years was kind of hurting you because of debt capacity. That I think the reason that you're you're stuck in it at the present time with how much you're borrowing is is what you're paying off. Is because you were using so much of your debt capacity in the TIDS and and your your levy was kind of being affected by the whole thing. So I think, you know, the things you put into place back in 17 and 18, you've recovered pretty nicely. Things are, you know, we can see better spots in the future because of what you've done and you've set yourself up probably. To be able to adjust a little bit of what you're borrowing. Or look at ways to to stabilize a tax rate, but know where you are as far as far as how are you using your capacity. And the other thing I think that it doesn't say in here is, you know, always look for ways that you're not taking the risk on for the. The TIF districts where maybe you're passing that through pay as you go kind of things. And you're not borrowing for those projects and then maybe that debt capacity is available for you to do your street projects as well. So just, we kind of just put in a page that shows, you know, how did we, how did we look at this a year ago in the financial manager plan? And and what actually happened? And so in 2021, during the plan, we were about 1.59 million of of projected levy. And we came in 60,000 better than that in actual when you did the budget. And then 22, you had projected, well, you, a year ago, we had projected a levy of about 1,682. And with this plan, we're saying, you know, it's about 1,593. So, you know, what you're putting into place as far as practice makes sense. You're, you know, we're rejecting out because our projection rates are, you know, we're assigning a certain percentage increase each line. Well, that's a shot in the dark and and we're just trying to identify where where you might have to like. Scrutinize things to make sure you're making levy limits and expenditure restraint. And we're just trying to show you where those bigger problems might hit you in the future. One big positive, I think, that has happened the last couple of years is TID six has had some improved growth or potential growth. And we're no longer projecting a tax levy support there. And so that has helped also with your tax tax rate on the debt, what the debt levy. That was a fairly big hit to your debt levy in the past plans and those are no longer in there. So it's kind of freed that up a little bit. And that's, that's what I'm kind of talking about with some of the debt repayment. We might be able to funnel in a little bit more in projects and do a little bit more borrowing, the flexibility. Okay. So just the last year's levy, you know, really the overall levy increased about 87,000. Most of it being in the general fund and some of it kind of moving around between the other funds, the debt service fund. I think when we get done with the financial management plan, it's pretty in line with what you're planning to do. And and there really isn't a very, when you get up to the the budget time, that's fairly laid out at that point. You did increase a couple, decreased other couple of lines. So in total, it was about an $87,000 increase. Compared to what was in the plan in the prior year. Now, just a comparison of what we're doing this year. In the, I believe this is the operating part, a little bit, but a little bit more. So when we were forecasting some of the items, we we changed some of our assumptions. We're still assuming 2% wage increases, but but fringes, which is more driven by the health insurance and and things like that. Staff felt that a a higher increase in the fringes needed to be in this, in this plan. So we have increased that percentage. We also have increased some of the line items that are more for commodities or services from from 0.5% up to 2% to 3%. And then as as we talked about earlier, your CIP, it it used to be a five year plan that. Can you, can you, can you describe what it was in the past again?
Sorry. So I would say that, you know, the the CIP plan that the city used in the past was. It was pretty well thought out and constructed for the budget year, but for the years. Two through five, it was, it was not analyzed as deeply. And so it didn't really reflect all of the projects that might be coming down the, down the pipe. And so now with the new comprehensive CIP plan, it includes every project that directors can see. In the next five years, it's it's envelopes a lot more than the old process that we had.
Yeah, I think one of the ways you could probably see that if you were here last year is that, you know, we kind of the last, maybe the last two times. We've kind of forced in a column to show a fire district building where it wasn't included in the CIP to begin with. And I think that's where you're talking about it. You're now including things that that may be necessities, whether they fit your plan. That's kind of what this is about is, okay, here's what we think needs to happen. This is the year we think it's going to happen, but. Can we afford it? And then you need to make decisions on, okay, do we move things around? Do we find other sources to pay for it? Is it that big of a priority that we need to maybe have? An exception, our policy is that we have a legacy type of thing where we need a fire district state or a fire station. And that needs to be put in. And and yeah, we're going to exceed maybe a policy one or two years, but get back in compliance then. So it gives you a chance to take a look and make decisions on that. So then the next thing we talked about, I talked a little bit about the equalized value earlier. We had a fairly, I believe, I don't have it in front of me. So let me just peek a couple of pages in front here. Really, we have a very conservative growth rate of 1%. I don't have the chart in front of me that says what you've averaged the last couple of years. But you know, that's pretty conservative, I think, as far as your equalized growth. The last couple of years, at least that we do have actual on the chart that'll come up is like 3, 3.4% and 4.4%. So, you know, 1% is very conservative and a lot, obviously, it it kind of tightens the screws when you're making the decisions. So. That's one way that you can kind of take a look at, okay, so what if we increase it to 2%? And and does do things fit better? But I think as far as your initial planning, it's good to have it be a little tighter. And make you really understand whether you've got room to do things. So this equalized growth chart, really the green columns are your actuals for the last five years. And then we're doing about one percenters until we get to the TIF five closure, which gives you a decent growth amount. Based on the chart I was just looking at, it'll give you approximately using what the values are today. You know, about a seven and a half percent increase that year. That's the 1% plus the closure of the TID. So that's a a year where I think we're able to fit a little more debt payment in there. You'll have an opportunity to take a look at, you know, what does that do to the tax rate as far as, you know, the reason there. The reason the state doesn't give us all the value when it comes back in is because they're trying to give us taxpayer relief. Sometimes it's possible to do that taxpayer relief and still maybe put a project in there that keeps the tax rate a little higher. Than it would have been if you just, you know, gone down to what it stayed status quo. So it, that's kind of an idea, something to think about in the future is, is that a good time to maybe do a certain project? And I think the, maybe the the plan shows that there's a fairly good project in that year. So this page is really the base plan. So this is today. Maybe there might be one more debt payment out of there, but this is right after the borrowing. Where we had our equalized value, which has been updated since the state came out. We have total obligations, which are really, I I believe they're all general obligation. And then we have certain sources of this debt that are paid or certain sources that pay for this debt. So it could be TIF districts, it could be, I I don't think it's utilities. I think it's mostly TIF districts. I believe you use revenue bonds for all your utility stuff, but so this is outside sources that are paying for the debt. And then you cut down to where you have your net levy and then we're showing you what your, your debt service, the equalized tax rate is as of 2021. And and with the way we structured the debt this year, we have you coming in the same month. So what we're trying to do there is stabilize your, your tax rate and your debt. We're trying to hit that 240 right now. That seems like a good number. That number could go up if you do bigger projects, but if you stay status quo, that's probably a good number to stay at. You're probably paying debt a little faster. It it definitely is a number that seems to fit your future years. As far as what funds the CIP. The operating budget, I believe. We have a little bit of levy coming in for the CIP. We'd like to have it be bigger. But the one thing that you'll see in the all in version is that the tax revy levy in the, in the CIP, in the capital project fund rolls. And you'll see that there's that impact on the, on this, on the levy limit when that happens. Because we're, we got big years, we got small years and and it kind of bounces around. And one of the things I think we've always recommended is establish a set capital projects levy and get that to be stable too. Because that's one less thing you have to think about. My past history at the job I was at as the finance director, we had an established lobby. I think it was climbing up to about 700 to 800,000 each year that we were using for street projects. And it stayed the same. We didn't, we didn't, you know, we didn't roller coaster it because it it just makes it harder on keeping that tax rate stable. So it's something that maybe if you were able to build that up and hold the line on it, that that might be something that could help. Smooth out things a little bit too. The other thing that happens is that the general fund does transfer in money from basically amounts that are above your cap, your fund balance policy. So it's been fairly uniform practice over the last, I don't even how many years, but the least as long as we've been doing this for you. That there's a certain amount that comes over from the general fund that helps fund the projects. You'll see in here that we have that as well going forward until we basically use up the amount that is in ex, in excess of the policy. Here is the basically a capital projects fund, financial statement, production, financial statement. I think we line most of the lines up. I think this mirrors your project schedule that you have for your all in. So I think this is the revenue sources that staff had recommended to use. You can see the local property tax definitely is rolling up and down a little bit. So so that has an impact you'll see on the graphs as far as the tax impact. We've got some grants that are coming in to feed some big projects. We're borrowing much more than your policy is right now. So there's a lot of things in this that make things kind of impact how this looks. So we'll look, we'll look at how that impacts the rate, the debt capacity on future slides. But it's something that will also give you two other scenarios that we have at the end. That shows you if you're a little more stable on that tax rate, what that does as well. I think the big thing that that we wanted to point out on this page for sure is that line that's basically at the bottom line of the revenues. Right above the total is that's the amount that we have in excess right now of the policy for fund balance. And so that's an amount that's being transferred over from the general fund and the general fund page kind of will show you how we come up with that amount. So the CIP, like I said, this is, would be what Adam presented as far as the the CIP list for the all in version. We got a little bit of a graphical version of what's going on here. So you can see we've got some regular years more in the line of what we've always done. For projects and 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 property taxes. And then you have a fairly significant project in 23, which. Must be police station of some store. Oh, that's a fire. That's a fire. Sorry. Yep. So that that's a fairly half the increase there. You know, we're, we're using more borrowing in that year. And we're hopefully getting some decent grant monies to help offset some of that cost as well. So you can see the total revenues are bigger, the borrowing is up, the levy really kind of stays a little bit flat. Then we'll just go into the debt policy. Basically, you're using long term debt to projects. And equipment that can't be financed with current revenues, you know, typically these items are are useful lives of at least five years. Or anything that's less than five years, you're not using this or so. So what you're using borrowing for is things that are are greater in five years of life. Next item is actually speaking to that very thing. And then really as far as your app, your annual capital improvements that you you will. No more than 75% of your annual capital products will be financed with long term debt. I don't know, is that something that you're still sticking to? I don't remember seeing that when we did any kind of the plan stuff. So I I'm not sure if you applied that with what we talked about, but in this version, that wouldn't be true. And then the one thing that the, we've been sticking to is your statutory debt limit capacity. I think the graphs we have in here show a percentage of your self imposed capacity versus the state. And so you've set your capacity limit at 70% of the state limit, which is 5% of your equalized value. So you've given yourself kind of another ceiling to to try to stay below. And that's great because, you know, when we recommend to people, we usually say, you know, leave the last 25% of it for emergency purposes. You've got a little bit more than that. So that's good. And and the one thing we, that I've mentioned a couple of times is, right now, your policy says that you won't borrow any more than you're paying off. And that's kind of helped you recover some from from some of the past items that were out there. So with this version, we have basically modeled the debt and and the projects. This actually is backwards from how we've done it in the past. So in the past, we've always taken, how much did you pay off? And then worked up to see how much you could actually spend on projects. With the all in version, we did it the other way where we had the project costs and we added the, the issuance expenses to come up with how much we were borrowing. So this, this is a different approach and it's something maybe you'll be able to get back to where, you know, that typically you've got the projects. You know what you need to do. You can see what the impact is and and you, instead of backing in to how much you do, you'll be able to set up. This is what we need to do and this is how we're going to get it done. So then we modeled out what the impact was of the all in CIP. So you've got five years worth of projects here. They total 17 million, 17 and a half million dollars worth of debt. Which is, you know, converts to about 22.3 million dollars of principal and interest. All these were CIP projects, so we didn't have any projects coming out of, you know, out of the TIF district. So there isn't any abatement or or repayment from a different, different source. So this is pure levy. And then what we tried to do is model the debt payments to be at that 240. While we hit that, that fire station year. And really what happened is is that hit, we actually, that was the year also where I think we got. See earlier, I was going to say we were able to fit it in. I think maybe there was some reduction in how much the debt was that year. But it just seemed to fit in a little bit better. And then you can see you've got those bigger projects in 23 and 20, or 20, got 23 and 24. That affected 24, 25 and I couldn't really keep the tax rate down. So when I got this 2027, basically, I did not manipulate that. I did not manipulate that two seventy-eight to get down to two seventy, because one thing that we talked about with staff is that we're anticipating that you're going to have better growth in one percent. And we're hoping that that growth would help kind of smooth down that two seventy-eight down to the two seventy number. And potentially that two seventy with more growth wouldn't even be that high. So it's something when we get out that far to, to really go after, uh, what the rate should be at that time. I think that's our goal is to be more at that two seventy based on what's happening in this plan. But I think your growth and, and what happens in the future will really allow you to have that dot number down a little bit better. So then the tax rate for the debt service fund is the next graph. Really what we've shown here is that we're stabilizing the, the tax rate, except we're, we're, you know, we did some big projects. We're borrowing a lot more money. And, and really when you do those kinds of projects, an increase in the debt tax rate is going to happen. If you want that to not be as big of an impact, maybe there's projects that you take out of that year that are borrowed for that. So you can fit that in a little better. That's something you can mess around with as far as when you're doing the plan. What, what are the priorities? Do you want to stay at that two dollars and forty cent number? Or what is your appetite for how much it should go up when you do take on a big project like that? So this kind of just shows you we're stable. We have to bump up just to cover a bigger, couple bigger project years and then we're stabilizing again. This is a schedule that I'm gonna just tell you is a bunch of numbers that feed into the next graph. So you don't have to, if you don't like numbers, this is not a schedule for you. But it does show you a couple of things just to point out. We have a column about four from the right that says percentage of self-imposed limit. Your self-imposed limit is seventy percent of your debt capacity for the state. So when you look at that, that's the percentage of the seventy percent. I also put in here, what's the statutory, uh, capacity? So you can see really based on where you're at. You know, you're at, right now you're at about fifty-three percent after what you did for an issue this year, uh, after paying off all the debt that you'll pay off in twenty-one. So you're, you're well below the seventy percent. Um, and, and based on what's in here, we do bump up a little with the bigger projects to about sixty percent in that, in that seven point three million dollar number that we, we borrow in twenty-twenty-six, but then you start to come back down. And the reason it looks like you're coming back down is because we don't have the next year, five years of projects, you'd probably end up, uh, staying more stable at a certain number by doing those up future projects as well. So a graphical way of looking at the debt capacity, which is probably easier to most people is you can see we, we're kinda hanging around seventy, sixty percent of the self-imposed number. Um, but with that bigger project out and in twenty-six, we definitely pop up to about eighty-six percent of your self-imposed limit. So that difference between the green and the red is the difference between, you know, what your policy is and where you're going to be at if you do that project that year. And then the top of the blue line is the statutory amount. So then we're going to pop into the operating section. Uh, these are the kind of the percentages we talked about earlier that we applied to your line items. So we've got the whole trial balance for the city. We've identified what category they fit into and we've applied these percentages. There are certain line items where it doesn't make sense to use a percentage in one of these. So we've, we've kind of taken a look at those head staff, look at them. If there's one time blips out there, uh, this is just a, for instance, let's say you had a reassessment and you don't budget that for that on an annual basis. We, we allowed staff a way to blip that in there for that year to kinda, uh, be able to account for that. And then maybe the next year we go back to a normal number. So that's kind of some of the things we did with the, the account number so that we could get into a schedule that pulls that projection together on this page. And this is really, once again, these should follow what your audit report has. And, and projects out using those percentages or those manual adjustments that, that staff put in or maybe some other percentages, they could directly enter a certain number into one line as well. To, to basically have it go up by a certain percentage that was outside of those, those codes. And so when we got all done, we were showing, uh, expenditure increases, which is the first green area. You know, the twenty-two number is actually based on what is being presented today. I believe that unless something's changed since last week, that the levy amount is what staff is presenting tonight, um, unless they got tweaked a little bit, but this budget in here should be representative of, of what's happening. And the other thing that's, that's probably not in what Adam is presenting tonight is we, I don't, the five hundred thousand was a number you gave me isn't okay. So, so this is, hopefully this is in line with, with what he's presenting to you later. Then what we've done is we've, uh, projected out those future years. You can see we're applying about three hundred thousand dollars a year, which I think is something that we had in the plan in the past. And we're just kind of using up the amount of excess fund balance above our policy. So down at the bottom, you can see we have an designated fund balance policy, which we're, I think we're at twenty percent is our policy. Going into twenty-one or by the end of twenty-one, we're at about thirty-nine percent instead of twenty. So we're using up that fund balance to get down to twenty. We're showing that in the plan that we're rationally using that over a number of years just to get things a little bit, uh, get some money, money out to capital as well as get to a policy amount. Typically that amount, if, if the budget flexibility point that, that standard and pores talks about is there, we're still, we're kind of filling that hole back up, even though we're transferring money out. And so that budget flexibility probably allows you to go longer into the future than twenty-twenty-six.
If I could just, um, jump in here and just kind of flash that out a little bit. So, so if you look, you know, as you see, as Dave said, you can see that that surplus is being used up, um, in those three years. And eventually when you get to year five, there's no surplus to, to help, um, with our CIP spending. But at the same time, if we do continue to have a little budget surplus each year, then, and as Dave said, that fills that hole back up. But this schedule doesn't show that. It doesn't show any budget surplus. It assumes that we do not have anything returning to the reserves each year. And so that's why you see that, um, and that's, that's appropriate because we can't count on having that budget surplus and, and each year that goes by, we are, you know, we, we're having to try to squeeze a little bit more out of each of our budget line items. And so, you know, it's, I think it's accurate that, that, uh, you know, we'll see less budget surplus in, in future years.
You know, and you never know when you're going to have one of those horrible years where it snows so much that they, it chews up your whole budget line item for snow and ice and that can use up all that surplus and all the other departments as well. Cause sometimes those years aren't real fun. You might want to add anything else on that or she book people? Okay. So we have a little bit of a graphical version of this. Uh, we're showing the general fund balance. Because we're not adding anything else, really there isn't a whole lot that's, that's too exciting about this. We're, we're showing that we have so much in revenues. We, we're filling the rest of it with property taxes. And then we're showing that use of surplus that, that was on that last chart that showed that we were using that until we were, um, down to zero. But like Nicholas said, that, you know, if we have surpluses, that would fill that in. We'd actually have that purple, uh, maybe going on another year. Then the next chart just shows a split between the different categories of fund balance, non-spendable typically is more of your, you know, if you're advancing money to a TIF district, that cash doesn't exist because you paid it out someplace so that the TIF district paid its bills. And so one part of your fund balance in the general fund might be money that isn't there. So either you prepaid expenses before the end of the year, the cash is gone before the end of the year. It really isn't an expense until you get to the next year, which I'm getting too detailed in my accounting descriptions, but, but really that's in a line where that money is not available to be spent on your budget. So that's what non-spendable means. Restricted really has to do with, you know, it could be things like you've got grants that, that you can only spend things on certain money. That's not a big part of your fund balance. And then assigned is really things that you set aside. So the city council can say, we're going to have a surplus this year instead of shooting it all over to capital, we're going to keep some money towards, uh, revow. So that's what assigned is, but that's something that the city council can do anytime, but you can also change where you put it. It's not written in stone. And then unassigned is really the, the magical term in the world is, uh, rainy day fund. That's, that's obviously in this, in this, uh, plan, we're showing that we've got a certain amount and we're spending it down to get to our policy. And that's why it shows that number shrinking. Same kind of graphical thing. We're showing where we've got surplus and we're spending it down. It's just a different view of it. And then levy limits in this version of the all in. So the blue section is the operating part of the levy limit, and that can only go up by net new construction, which isn't really a very big number. What was your, your percentage for next?
Point four, three percent.
Yeah. So point four, three percent is all the city could go up for that blue section this year. It's not very much. Then what we have is the ability to pay for debt, general obligation debt through the levy. That's above that, that levy limit amount. And so that's really that, that red mark. Where we're paying for our debt service. Now in the first couple of years, we aren't using all of that, that, uh, adjustment because we don't need it. Some of our, some of our operational, uh, levy limit is actually paying for a little bit of the debt. And so we aren't using all that. So that green is showing that you've got some, some room at the end of twenty-twenty-one, but based on how the all-in version goes and the fact that you've got a roller coaster on some of your capital levies, you can see where we're all of a sudden exceeding the debt limit because we're, we're raising levies, the levy up, and we don't have the ability to do it. You know, that blue section really doesn't give you a whole lot of room. And so really by, by increasing a lobby, you gotta look at that and say, okay, we're not going to be able to levy that much that year for capital. And so you either gotta find another source or reorganize your priorities. And then just kind of a final look at the, how the impact of the taxes are for the all-in. We've got the operating, what happened to the levy. By using all those forecast codes, we've got the capital projects levy, which is really based on, um, what was in the all-in plan for having a levy, uh, the taxi we have coming back at forty-five thousand dollars a year. And then that existing debt and the new debt, um, we showed you earlier on with the debt limit or the debt tax rate. And so you kind of see with the way that the all-in is, is working is that we're, we're kind of roller coastering even the total amount of the property tax rate. So that's something that you, you know, obviously when you're doing your planning, one, you have to make levy limits. So that's something that, that's going to come into play. And then also you kind of want to try to see if there's a way for you to, to have things, you know, you're going to look at your operating budget. You're going to probably sense to it. Um, you know, as far as your projects, you know, maybe you're going to have to cut back on some so that you can fit your, uh, fit, you know, some of those debt limit or debt payments so that it's smoother. Um, but we're really trying to get that line to be flatter when we're doing the, the financial management plan. And so the one thing that we would always typically show you, and you'll see it in the other two versions is that, that, that property tax line is typically a, a more flat line because we're trying to keep the tax rate stable. But just to finish up the all in, we, we got just a couple of slides to that. And then we're going to go to the other scenarios real quick, just to show you what the effect is. But, uh, you know, the outside factors, you know, obviously TIF six, uh, if TIF six development doesn't take place, we might have to consider tax levy support. But so hopefully that's, that's, uh, coming along and that you're getting that. Any other growth is obviously going to impact the, the levy increases that I talked about. We're using one percent. You get better growth than that. That's going to help you fit things in a lot better. You know, otherwise, you know, who knows if the state's ever going to say, okay, we're going to dry up the personal property aid or anything like that. And so you never know when, when the state might pull something on you. Internal reasons. Some of the increases in expenses may not be realized. So maybe that would end up having you be in a little better shape and that's kind of that budget flexibility. You, you're expecting certain amounts to happen and maybe they don't, maybe you don't have a bad winter and so you're not paying a bunch of overtime. So you have positives going there. You, maybe you have increases in revenues, uh, other things you can consider. And I don't think you've done it as, well, you've got the wheel text, but I think there's other alternative revenues you could, you could maybe, uh, look into if you needed to, um, and you know, obviously, uh, decreases in expenditures, CIP or other costs, uh, will, will help your budget overall. So uh, the one thing that we wanted to talk about in this version is that your, your levy limit that I showed you on the graph is you have limit this year to, you know, you're not using all of your, all of your potential levy limit. But when we get it, when we're looking at twenty-two, really that black line does include all the rest of the years, even though one's just razor thin. Really we, we have a little bit of work we're going to have to do to make those yours. This was just in from last year. And I think we, did we continue to have the reduction in the, the, um, shared revenue again this year?
So the reason that we put that in is that there was conversation at the state level or some, um, concern that the, in the light of the pandemic, that the state might decrease shared revenues. And so we, we put that in there just again to highlight the fact that you can never count a hundred percent on the revenue sources from the state that things can't.
And I think we still have it built in that you're losing five percent. So I think, you know, that's pretty conservative as well. Really, I don't think we've heard anything about shared revenues. So that, I mean, that's a line that we probably could pop back up and it would make you look a little bit better as well. You know, you're utilizing the unassigned fund balance to help you pay for expenses. You're reducing your dependency on debt because of that. The more you promote economic development, get somebody to, to come and build here. That obviously increases your net new construction allows you to increase your levy limit, uh, uh, operating portion. There's a lot of talk, although it keeps getting put into bills that seem to be stalling about the advanced refunding of tax exempt debt. And there's a couple of issues that I think, you know, at, at least the thirteen that we probably could have gone after and got a good savings on. If we had that as a, as a possibility, I'm hoping that they'll do it because, you know, there's a, you know, obviously that's going to make me more busy, which I'm already crazy busy, but you know, there's a lot of good savings out there. If they would bring that back, that, that a lot of places could take advantage of. Um, and then like I talked about the fixed levy for the capital projects is just another tool that you could do to stabilize that tax rate. So just to go, do you want to talk anything else about the all in?
I'd just say that, um, I think for the council, something that you're seeing in that first section, which is, you know, if, if the comprehensive plan was implemented in, in its entirety is something that we haven't seen in recent years is that levy limit becomes a factor. In other words, in the last few years, we have been able to, um, raise taxes as we needed for various, um, for various spending requirements without having to worry about levy limits because we were able to use our debt service and tack that on, on top. But if, and it's a big F, but if we were to go all in with all of that comprehensive, uh, comprehensive plan for CIP, we, we wouldn't actually be able to do that because it would force us to use up all of that debt service adjustment and then, and then even need more than that. And that's where that black section of that graph in your packet, that, that's what that's showing. So I just wanted to emphasize that because that's something new that we haven't seen for a few years. And as we've been looking at these, um, these financial management plans.
Yeah. And a couple of other, since you were talking, I kind of thought of a couple of other things is if this, if the all-in plan is something that you're, you know, some of those priorities are out there, you're going to want to consider how, what's your appetite for increasing the debt tax rate? You know, I showed you thirty, thirty to forty cents. You know, is that something acceptable to you? The other thing is the debt limit, you're still pretty good shape, but you're, you know, you've got some big projects and you get to eighty-six percent of your self-imposed number. So I mean, those are the kind of things that you gotta, you, you take a look at, maybe you can move some street projects during that year. Have a delay on street project, you know, whatever you need to maybe smooth that out a little bit. Maybe we don't hit quite that number. And, and like I said, growth is going to be your friend. Any kind of growth is going to give you more ability, more, more of a limit on your, on your debt capacity is going to improve your tax rate. So I mean, every year you're going to look at this, but at least it gives you kind of an idea of can we do it in the future? Does it fit our policies? Or do we need determine what a tax rate policy is? And, and do we have certain things that are legacy in nature where we're kind of thinking, okay, we can go over this policy maybe for a couple of years, but we want to be under it. You know, by a certain date and, and one of our, our clients did a big park project and they did a two-year, uh, blip. And Moody's made them basically, you know, put it in a policy and, and, you know, we understand you've got certain things, but you're going to bring yourself back down. You're not going to just stay up there. So that's things you can think about for that. Now as far as just kind of showing you some examples where we're not doing all in. So the first scenario is basically, we just took the, the total tax rate, um, equalized tax rate of the city. All the, all the parts that we showed you in those graphs. And I, I have one that shows that too, that shows the whole property tax, uh, rate and taxes. And we said, okay, what if we did three percent increase on the rate each year? So let's see, and, and if we funded all So let's see, and, and if we funded all of the other things like the operations and the taxi and whatever, whatever we had excess left over went towards capital. So we're kind of smoothing the overall tax rate with this. We aren't really smoothing the, the capital, but it gives us kind of a, we're willing to go up a certain amount. What happens? So we've got the capital projects fund, you'll see that the tax line is a little more smooth. But that's based on, okay, we've got a three percent increase in the tax rate and whatever is left over after the operate, the general funds funded goes into capital. All the other revenues are fairly the same, except we use the policy that you have in place where you're only borrowing for what you pay off. So we went, we went with that because that's what your policy is now. We wanted to show you. Here's an increase, but we're going to stick to our policies. So we do have the, you know, I think we showed you this in prior years that if we have all these projects that, that were in the all in, how much are we not able to fund? And so you can tell a three percent increase in the, in the levy that we, we can't borrow that much based on our policies and we have less of a property tax than the all in version. You know, we get to the end and we don't have about $13 million worth of money to be able to do that because of the policies we have in place. So that's one of the reasons that you review your policies on an annual basis to see, you know, do they fit or the reasons that you need to maybe exceed them? This graph is just the same one we had before that just shows you all the revenues and expenses. You can see where, because we don't have certain borrowing or levy that we don't match exactly our revenues to our expenditures. But we do have a flat property tax or borrowing amount. Then the borrowing sizing, really this is the same for both this version and the next one we'll show you. And this is based on that policy where you only borrow what you pay off. This is the tax rate impact. And so we're able to hold that $2.40 really all the way through 2027. You know, we don't have that big jump in the, the debt service because of big projects, because we basically we're only, you know, we've reduced how much we're borrowing. So it's easy to stay where you're at with this, with this version of the debt, the capital and the debt plan. And then the debt tax rate is flat like it was before, because we're trying to have that stability. We just don't have that bump up because we're not, we're not borrowing for the, in this version, we're not borrowing for that whole big project out in 25 or 26. With a three percent here, we're, you know, we're not borrowing as much. So we're able to actually use some of that, that debt adjustment for, you know, the debt adjustment doesn't need to be used to pay for operations. Let me say that again. Operations actually is paying for debt and it isn't getting chewed up as fast because of the policy that you have in place right now for that. So that green area stays available until we get out to the 26 year, and that's the first year that levy limits really hits you. And that's so far in the future that probably you've made decisions by then that you don't hit that black area. You can't. Plus you can't go over. So it's gonna, never going to be black when you get to actual. And then the overall tax rate, I'm going fast. So if, if I'm going too fast, let me know. It just, like I said, the operations part is the same as we showed you in the all in. The tax levy or taxi service is the same. And then the debt service is based on your, your policy. So we're at $2.40 each year. And whatever we were going up in the tax rate, that three percent. So I think if you, if you look at the difference between the 22 or the, at least the 23 and the 22, that's a three percent increase. And whatever we aren't using up in those other lines is going into the capital projects fund for levy. So we've, you know, it, it shows you that we're pretty flat as far as the tax rate, there's a little bit of creep and most of that's because of the general fund. And the capital projects fund has, you know, a little bit of a, well, basically it's the general fund creeping up is why you're going up there. You can see that blue lines creeping up. So then alternative two is just doing that same exercise with five percent and I won't go, I won't go into too much detail because it's really the same slides again. But in this version, we have a little more property tax. We're still using the same borrowing policy that you have in place now. You have less of a deficit in your projects that you aren't able to complete based on the all in capital projects list. So it's, it's about a million, a little bit more than a million less that or more, a million more that can be funded because of that tax levy increase. That graph is, it kind of shows you that, you know, we've got a little bit more levy. Probably I think everything else looks pretty similar. Levy limits, this one, even though you've got the five percent creep, really what's happening is because we increased the amount that is going to capital projects, that's starting to chew up how much we have in the levy limit. So that you can see the green line kind of goes away faster. And that's because that capital projects levy is going up in this version a little bit more. And so it starts to, starts to nip away at that. Freedom in that debt adjustment that you weren't using those earlier years. And then the overall property tax in this one, you can see at a five percent increase, your, your inclines a little bit bigger. Which would be expected because we're, we're loving more for capital processes. You can see that brown area is getting bigger as you go on because of that levy that's in there. So that's the general financial management plan. But a TIF one to go through quickly so that you can get onto the budget. But I'm happy to answer any questions and I know staff has been involved with me completing this in the last couple of weeks so that they can answer anything that's more detailed than where I get to. Basically, your policies from the past have been working. And you're, and you're getting more, you're, you're getting away from where we were when we first started this. And, and I think, you know, it's a good exercise to be able to know what's, what's needed in the city and see if you can fit it so that, you know, it's a good way to look at your capital plan and say, okay, can we do this? And what's our limitations? So we want you to use this as a way to, you know, take that capital projects list that, that Adam had you look at and say, okay, we can tell that there's some pressure points, you know, how are we going to, how are we going to move this around so that we keep our, our tax rate steady? Or are we willing to have a little bit of an increase and be able to take those projects? A pop right up tonight. All right. So this is more of a, a quick look at the TIDS. Typically, I think I did this on the second night with the utility one, but TID five. We aren't actually projecting any new developments in the actual cash flow that we have now, but there are some potential projects that, that are out there, but we just don't know what those values are. So right now we're going with a no, no additional growth version, because we just don't have anything that, that we can lean on for that. TID five is a donor district for TID seven. And we're projected right now, I think, to make those donations through 2025. When we were, when we could close TID five, I think you could stay open one more year and do another contribution to TID seven if you really wanted to. That's something to consider at that point. But at this point, there's about, based on this projection, we have about $3.8 million more that we will donate to TID seven if we only go through 2025. And we're also, you know, if TID seven does well, maybe there isn't a need for that much donations. And if there's, if that's the case, that possibly TID five could close sooner. But right now we have it closing in 25 and that's what ran through the general increases in the equalized value. The next page is just the cash flow statement. And really all we're showing on that is, is that we get to 2025. We send most of the month, well, all the money over except for what we're paying probably for audits and, and other administration. And, and there isn't anything left over. That 2026, if, if you close a district, that wouldn't be collected. So that line would not exist. But at this point you would close this when you deem it ready to be closed and TID seven maybe doesn't need any more money. Doesn't look like what I have in front of me. Okay. Just in a different format. So it looks weird because I've got three lines at the beginning, but I think it says the same stuff. Okay. So we're, we're definitely projecting new value in three projects in the future. So the LNM expansion, Cummins phase one development and a quick trip. The new growth in that district is what was, what allowed us to actually eliminate the tax levy support that we've always shown you in the past. Past plans. So that was really a big, a big shot in the arm for the district. And, and as you know, last year, the, the joint review board allowed you to extend the life of this district for a total of six years. If you look at the cash flow on the next page, we, you know, if things go the way that they're projected right now, you wouldn't need six years. You'd only need the first year of the, of the first three years of that extension. You're able to stay open six. I didn't show the next three because at this point it wasn't necessary. And I believe even staff is projecting that this wouldn't be closing sooner as well.
Well, I, except that, as it mentions on the slide, we do have a development that may take place with Southwest Health. And if that takes place, then maybe a cause there for the increment generated by that project to be utilized. And so then that may cause the TID to stay open longer.
Seven. Downtown Ted, we did not project any additional value in, in the future years for TID seven at this time. It's collecting money from TID six through donations. And as I talked about before, right now we're just showing it through 2025 and that's about 3.8 million. And the city, you know, we'll monitor that to see if that's necessary. There are PAGO payments in this district where you're paying the developer for the parking facility and that lasts until 2025, which is the year you'll take over ownership of that. And so those payments at that point will stop. And then also in the advances, basically, I think based on this, you, you must have already collected enough money to pay off the advances. So you should be good on the advances at this point. Is that correct?
Um, I, I think we're right about there in 2022.
Yeah, I think so too. So when I look at the cash flow, that is actually, you know, you, you basically you turn the, the page into 2022, probably based on this, you're, you're collecting everything through August and then, then you're probably free and clear of what the, the general fund has been looking to the TIF district. So the rest of the financial makes you look like you're going up and up. If you have development, obviously that may change how that fund balance accumulates. But it looks like you, you know, you've got some decent growth without us projecting anything new at this point. So I think that's, that's a really good sign at that point. So you're, you're projected to close 2030. Obviously, if you do more projects, that would affect that closing year as well. So that's just a quick synopsis. Like I said, the TIF districts are a lot better shaped than when we first started this process. Not having to have tax levy support for TID six is huge because it frees up some abilities for the city itself. Any questions? That was a lot. Scott a little grumbling.
Questions, anyone? I think those of us who have been on the council since we implemented this plan in 2016, 2017, 2018, see the results of our action. It's a little more difficult for those who weren't here when we were facing some very tough years with balloon debt payments and really no kind of avenue to, to get out. And so I think we've made some good financial decisions relative to having a plan and sticking with it.
It says here that I don't have a page, it's speed six. It says that the city will take over ownership of the property, which is the library. Do you have any information that is different than what we've learned in previous years as far as the potential or the, how positive is it going to be as far as the city taking set in this council chamber here and the person was saying, well, we hope to have it so we can have information that says different.
The only information that we have from doing the plan is that that's the year that that ownership is supposed to change. Amounts that, that I believe you're paying the developer at this point for incentives would, would that will cease. You won't have to pay out anything, but as far as taking over, I don't have information on it'd be a cost burden or anything. We don't have anything in the plan for that.
So I can answer that question for you can, or at least provide you some insight. So that's something staff actually started looking at surprisingly this week. We had a meeting on Monday to talk about that. So we are going to be meeting kind of with the ownership of the, I believe it's the hotel hospitality group that it's under a different LLC. But essentially to start talking about that because in the, both the development agreement as well as the commercial lease agreement, there is verbiage that talks about potentially the intention has always been for the group to transfer that over to the city. So now we just want to kind of cement that in stone, but 2025, but 2024, 2025 is, is when technically is the renewal of those agreements starts to occur. And in the development agreement, it talks about how before the renewal occurs, their intention was originally to transfer that over to the city. So we're going to start having those conversations hopefully here in the next couple of weeks to start kind of more cementing in stone what that means.
Right now, as I recall, we're paying $18,000 a month.
Correct.
And so that means we're paying roughly one and a half million dollars over the period of years
Right.
for this library.
Correct.
So I was just wondering what what the estimate was, the thinking was, what we're finding out as far as what it's going to be different.
Actually have a question related to that too. I, the, the phrase, the library parking facility?
Yes.
Parking facility, there are, there is underground parking under the hotel and the library. And the city assumed some of that parking space that was put in by somebody else. So that's why we have this arrangement.
But what this says, the PAGO payments to the developer for the library parking facility will continue. But is that the whole library?
That continues until we look at.
Or is it two different things?
So they're kind of combined. It's, there's two separate, there's a development agreement and then there also is a commercial lease agreement. In both of those agreements, there is mention of the commercial space, which is essentially is the library above ground. And then there's also the parking facility, which is essentially the designated spots that are for the library is also part of it. So it's kind of an interweaved web of multiple things.
There is also, I believe, the issue that there could be potential for separation of what is it? Some of the electrical costs? Are you aware of that?
Yep, that's going to be more of these conversations we're having with them. So all weaves together.
So that's outside of the financial management plan. So let's go back and does anybody have questions of David on either the cities or the TID districts, financial management, planning documents? It's a lot. It's a lot. And especially when you start scenario one, scenario two, scenario three, with those graphs, it got to be a lot.
What are weaknesses you put for the economy, the per capita buying income? Does that do the fact that they take into consideration the universities? I'm assuming that.
So that's, that's S and P. That's your rating agency that, that points that out. So they have a line item in their, in their check offs that said a line average. And, and you know, if I, I don't know if the city brings down your per capita income, I would.
Well, it.
If it's including the students, I suppose, yeah.
Right. Because it's based on total population. So you can go to the census
Yep.
data and then you see our census data compared to other census data. data, and then you see our census data compared to other census data and our proportion of, uh, population that's between the ages of eighteen and thirty, I think it is. I'd have to go back and look, but I kept, I used to track that pretty good is, um, vastly different than our neighbors. And so then, you know, if you look at earnings, then same thing. Um, cause the earnings group is a different group. So, yeah, Isaac, I think our overall um, median income is less, is less because of the number of students that are included, that the number of young adults who we assume are students are included in that.
You know, the one thing about rating agencies is they take everything in black and white too. They don't, they don't make a if, if your financial statements to say you're doing this, they'll take that at face value, even though you might have a good reason of why it was that way that year. That's the unfortunate thing on some of those things that you can get ding certain years. Uh, uh, and it's, it's not because they ever took into consideration of why it was just because it was in your audit report and it's just the way their models work.
Okay, um, if anybody has questions on the financial management plan, I would suggest that you, I, I have to study it, that you take those to Adam and to Nicola. And that if David needs to provide additional information, he can and will do so through them. So please funnel any questions through our staff to funnel to David. And, uh, we thank you for coming. I think you have a long trip back tonight.
Hour and a half. It's not terrible.
Not bad. Okay.
Okay. Thank you for letting me present.
Thank you. All right, I've lost my agenda, but I believe the next thing on our agenda is Adam and the city manager draft broad budget presentation. And he now gets the magic quicker.
I do.
Is that right? So now we just have to wait until Jody brings up his presentation.
For us here. A great John, multi-engineer. There it is. All right. So you alls in front of you should have a hard, uh, copy version of this. Um, one thing obviously additionally to this that you will see is each of you now has a hard copy of the finalized CIP. Um, so as we've been going through this, again, this is kind of the all in comprehensive look of what we've done with the CIP. It's a plan. So as we've talked about, um, and as kind of David alluded to in the financial management plan, the goal now of the city obviously is we've identified projects and priorities that we would like to see in the next five years. And our job, obviously your job as the council and our job as staff is to try to blend those together to make sure that we can figure out what projects we can do and obviously do them in a way that benefits the city, uh, but is able to be done financially. So those are things that we're gonna be continuing to do throughout the years, um, kind of as it goes forward. So tonight, obviously, is the first, uh, kind of conversation as it relates to the budget. Uh, so again, this is a draft presentation. So, uh, these will be ever changing kind of information and numbers as we go forward. But one of the things obviously that I like to do, um, or that's been done in the past here is we kind of bring you kind of what we're seeing, uh, as we're going forward. So one of the first things obviously we like to do is kind of have a quote. I've done this in every municipality I've done in in regards to the budget. So this year's quote is budgeting isn't about limiting yourself. It's about making the things that excite you possible. So as we've talked about, we have a lot of things that we would love to do in the city. Um, and the way to find them is to do them is to make sure that we're being financially prudent. Uh, putting them into there and that way they can become possible. So that's kind of what we want to focus on. So next page again talks about the budgetary timeline. Um, so right now we are obviously Tuesday, October twelfth, which is the presentation tonight of the city manager budget. Uh, tomorrow, which obviously all council members are welcome to attend. That's gonna be at four o'clock where the Water and Sewer Commission, uh, right here in the council chambers will be reviewing kind of the draft, uh, and potentially approving the twenty twenty two utility budget. On Tuesday, October nineteenth is the next common council review session, and that's where we will kind of go into more of the nitty gritty details of the operational budgets individually. Um, looking at specific line items, uh, certain areas that potentially you as council members may want to see changed. Um, or have questions in regards to why are things going up? Why are things going down? Uh, one of the things we will have to look at there is obviously that meeting right now is scheduled for six o'clock. Um, there is gonna be a little bit of a conflict with that because obviously the historic preservation committee meets same time. So that's one of the things we'll have to kind of think about as a council is obviously council member Killian would be missing a portion of that. So we may want to look at potentially either moving that meeting up. Um, having it occur earlier if that works for your schedules or potentially delaying that a little bit to start either maybe at seven. Um, so then that we could have a hard set. So obviously that's something we don't have to make a decision today. Uh, but as staff, we do want to kind of get that information out to the public so they're aware. Um, so you'll be seeing me kind of ask and kind of solidifying that with you guys to change that. Um, otherwise, again, Tuesday, October twenty sixth, there will be another meeting if needed. That will be during the regular council meeting. Uh, then all the notices go out. There is a public, uh, public presentation done by the city manager on the fifteenth for the public. And then the twenty third again is a final public hearing, uh, where then we would be asking the council to adopt, uh, a budget so that we can, uh, statutory move correctly and get all those in the bills. So again, kind of tonight quickly, uh, because you guys have had a lot of information. So I don't want to shred your, your brains too much, but we're gonna go through the budget basics, uh, do a little bit of a review of the twenty twenty one budget review. Uh, talk about some of the financial outlooks and considerations that we looked at within the twenty twenty two budget. And then talk about kind of where things are looking right now in regards to the budget and some of the recommendations and changes that potentially we have to look at going forward. So again, just budget basics, um, so pretty, you know, as it says basic here, the city must create a budget where revenues equal expenditures. So generally our revenues are with borrowing, state aid, feeds and taxes. And expenditures are obviously the operating expenses, the capital spending, the CIP, the debt payments and any tid shortfalls that we may need to cover. This is the same slide you obviously saw from David's presentation. Uh, so it talks about the specific expenditures that make up our budget. Uh, so there's the operating budget. This is the basic cost to run the day to day operations. There's our capital improvement plan, which is the one time cost for large capital items. Uh, some items are predictable, others are not. There's debt service. Obviously, this is the repayment of our loans, which are used to fund expensive, long lasting capital projects. And then there's our Tiff districts, which obviously if the revenues are less than expenses, uh, the shortfalls may need to be covered by other sources of revenue. So just to briefly talk about the operating revenue, um, again, the rule here is one time revenue should not be used to balance the operating budget. So basically there are two options to balancing the budget. We either have to increase revenue or we have to decrease expenses. Um, and just, just the personal equivalent to kind of make it, uh, a way to review this is your monthly pay must cover your ongoing personal expenses, utilities, food, clothing, et cetera. So using one time revenue to balance your budget is like winning five hundred dollars in the lottery and leasing a car with a monthly payment of five hundred dollars. You can cover the expenses for one month, but you'll not be able to cover the expense in next month unless you win the lottery again. So again, that's why we don't want to use kind of one time sources, um, to cover our operating expenses. So debt service, um, again, this is where the city borrows money to pay for large, long life capital projects, uh, such as streets, the length of the loan should not extend beyond the useful life of the item for which the funds were borrowed. And payments on loans represent the city's debt service. So again, there are caps in the amount of the city can borrow that it exists. There's the state limit of five percent of the equalized value for the city. And then there is, as we talked about tonight, our city imposed policy of three point five percent of the equalized value. Uh, so again, personal equivalent, when you take out a mortgage or a car loan, you make monthly payments until the debt is paid off. Uh, so again, this just provides you guys some, uh, notes. The twenty twenty one equalized value was seven hundred and sixty one million, two hundred and twenty four thousand, two hundred dollars. At five percent of the state borrowing limit, that would allow the city to have a borrowing capacity of thirty eight million, sixty one dollars and two, sixty one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. And the principal outstanding right now in twenty twenty one is about twenty million, four hundred and ninety two thousand, twenty two dollars, or as David can present, we're about fifty three percent of that borrowing ability. Um, so then again, we also have a city debt imposed policy of three point five percent. So when you take the amount of our equalized value types, three point five percent, we would have a self imposed policy that we could borrow twenty six million, six hundred and forty two dollars, eight hundred and forty seven. So as you can see with the principal outstanding, we're about seventy six point nine percent of that self imposed limit. Um, so those are things obviously we continue to kind of look at. So CIP funding, I'm not gonna spend too much time on this because you got the whole explanation kind of last month, last week during our conversation. Uh, but again, there's multiple sources that can cover CIP funding from transfers from the general fund, carryovers for previous years, using some short term borrowing, um, and then also just understanding that base reserves may impact bond ratings. And then we also use long term borrowing for streets and some buildings. Uh, so with our CIP funding, uh, due to budgetary concerns, our best estimate is that the city conservatively has available six hundred and ninety six thousand, six hundred and thirty five dollars to spend on predictable CIP items. This is what you saw last week. Um, these items include the vehicle replacement, equipment replacement, building repairs, park improvements and sidewalk repairs. Uh, in addition, the city has borrowed anywhere from one to two million dollars for street reconstruction annually. And under the current long range financial plan, the city has limited this borrowing to the amount being retired each year. Uh, so in twenty twenty one, the anticipated principal paid off for levy supported financial borrowing is one million, two hundred and seventy five thousand. So if you recall last week, we talked about how if you look at this plan, we were anticipating to actually have to borrow a lot more. Uh, we made some recommendations in regards to how we could stay under that limit. So then our Tiff districts again are separate funds that have their own revenues and expenses. Uh, if a revenues exceed expenses, the amount goes into the fund balance for the district savings for future expenses. The Tiff district may close early and the created tax basis added to the rest of the city. If expenses exceed the revenues and there isn't fund balance or savings, the general fund must cover the shortfall. Uh, so again, the personal equivalent, just to think about this is imagine that you own your own several small businesses. If the revenue exceeds the expenses, you can reinvest that money into the business. If it down the road, you will see the benefit, the business and make a profit. If the business can't pay their expenses, you then as the owner must pay for your personal account. So this is pulled, the next few sides are pulled directly from our actual uh, twenty twenty one budget book that we do and submit. Uh, so this is just kind of a recap again of where things were at. So this show, this slide particularly shows you the equalized tax rate that the city has recognized over the last couple of years. Um, so you can see we are located in red and then all of our other kind of benchmark municipalities that we use for studies, um, are surrounding that. The next slide here again, just kind of provide some of that information in a different graphical form. So it shows you over the last kind of five years here, how, uh, each municipality has either gone up or down in regards to their tax rate. Um, you can see that we are the yellow representation on this graph. And then in the bottom one kind of shows you the overall growth, uh, with Platteville at four point four, five percent. The next slide here shows you a breakdown of specifically the total governmental revenues. So this is all of our sources of funding and kind of how those are broken out. Um, as you can see, the majority of our funding is covered either by property taxes or by intergovernmental revenue slash charges. Um, and again, it has kind of the breakdown here on the side where you can see each individual line item and kind of explains what those are. But as we've talked about, or as you're gonna see throughout this conversation, again, the majority of our funding for revenue does come from two main sources. Either intergovernmental revenue and charges, um, or specifically property taxes. So now this just basically breaks out just the general fund revenues for twenty twenty one. Um, so again, you can see the two main categories that continue to be intergovernmental revenues and charges um, and property taxes are what primarily is funding the majority of our city operations. So then what I provided you guys is just kind of a quick breakdown of what is in the budget book showing, um, how everything was kind of figured out for the last couple of years, uh, so showing the general fund, uh, specifically with the revenues and how that's broken out through taxes, special assessments, intergovernmental revenues. Um, again, as we talked about, you can see those two categories represent the majority of the funding that we have that made up the eight point three million dollars. Um, then we have the taxi bus fund kind of shows you how historically that's been broken out over the last couple of years, uh, in regards to how that's funded. On the next page here, it has the debt service. So you can see what's been levied for taxes in regards to that every year. Um, and then also shows you the capital project fund where you can see what has been historically in the past couple of years levied for taxes there. Um, as well as any intergovernmental revenues, public charges for service and then other financing sources. The next slide here gives you a breakdown to kind of all of our Tiffs, our Tid districts. So this is, um, kind of the information that David presented as well. Just kind of showing you specifically the taxes we plan to come in in the intergovernmental revenues. So you can kind of see all those breakdowns for four, five, six and seven. And then other three categories that we obviously have are redevelopment authority. Um, so that is the revolving loan fund that we have for there. Uh, we have our affordable housing, which if you recall, tid number four was closed, uh, and for the last year, we utilized that money to create the affordable housing option. Uh, and then we also have the Brasky Event Center. Um, that is another special revenue fund that we utilize there as well. So then again, this just kind of goes, now we go into the details of the expenditures for twenty twenty one, just to give you a highlight there. So you can see the majority of our expenditures um, do fall into kind of a couple of different categories. Our capital projects fund is obviously one of the higher ones at twenty seven percent. Um, our public safety then is eighteen, uh, then with public works in our Tiff districts being fourteen with the Tiff districts and nine being public works. And then everywhere else, that's just kind of shows you the breakdown there. Uh, then again, just focusing, uh, specifically on the general fund expenditures. Um, you can see primarily our general fund expenditures are thirty nine percent is related to public safety. Uh, twenty one percent is related to culture, recreation and education. Uh, general government makes up sixteen, public works is nineteen. Uh, health and human services is two, and then conservation and development is three percent. So then what this last slide provides you is just kind of a breakdown of the overall expenditures. Um, so you can see here, we have the general government, public safety, public works, health and human services, culture and recreation and conservation and development. Um, as well as then all of our kind of special revenue funds then with our taxi bus, debt service, capital projects, our Tiff districts, the RDA, affordable housing and the Brasky Center. So some of the financial outlooks and considerations that we've looked into so far for twenty twenty two, um, is using projections for operational needs. Anticipating borrowing and CIP spending, the long range financial plan provided a look at the financial factors influencing the next five years. So obviously that was presented tonight. So again, just to kind of recap some of those concerns. Um, again, we are seeing that increases in operational expenses are expected to output net new construction. Uh, good news, it is anticipated that tid six will not require levy support, uh, due to the projected growth. So that definitely is an improvement. One of the concerns that we continue to talk about obviously is our net new construction. So as you can see this year, it was zero point four three percent, uh, which equated to about three million dollars. And then what I've provided you is a couple of examples of our municipal peers. Um, so you can certainly see, you know, the town of Platteville saw one point five one percent, uh, so there definitely is growth occurring outside of the city. Um, Lancaster, kind of one of our municipalities is very similar. They were at point four one, uh, Belmont was at one point seven three. And then some of our other benchmark communities, as you can see between Whitewater River Falls, who obviously also have UW campuses, um, saw some pretty significant growth and Baraboo, uh, didn't do as well, but they did a little better than us. Um, so again, some of the things that we're looking at is trying to sustain about six hundred and ninety six thousand, six hundred and thirty five dollars of annual levy support for CIP. Uh, will obviously require use of reserves as we talked about, or as was presented tonight, using about five hundred thousand dollars to cover that. Um, so obviously tid and citywide growth and or increases in state funding will help with the above. And city funding support for a new fire facility will need to be monitored due to the debt service requirements. So as we talked about, that's a project we know we're anticipating trying to do sometime in the near future here in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. And obviously with that, we'll have to take into consideration the debt that would be needed to service that. Um, obviously with the reduction, if we can get grants, federal funding, state funding, um, and obviously support, uh, that will reduce the amount of tax burden that would be needed by the municipality. So as we talk about the twenty twenty two budget, um, again, there are plenty of budget drivers that we look at as staff or that I look at as well. For operating expenses, there are obviously salary benefits, any mandates that are coming from the federal government or state government. Uh, elections can dictate the amount of money that we have to put into the operating budget, um, as well as any new contracts. Uh, revenue, some things that can impact, obviously the budget are, as kind of was indicated by Dave, decreases in state aid, uh, or increases in state aid. The hotel tax is something that we always consider. And then any revenue related to new development, obviously increase, uh, helps us increase the budget and the ability to take on new projects or initiatives or staff. Uh, other things that we obviously have to consider is the debt service, uh, any tid support that may be needed and continuing to try to stay within our abilities to be within the expenditure restraint program. So some of the things obviously that we are looking at for budget initiatives in twenty twenty two uh, is again proposing a one percent wage increase for all non-union city staff members, um, except the city manager. So again, you guys as the council, I can't set my, my increase, so that has to be decided by you guys. So right now in the budget, there is nothing that has been decided for me. Um, if obviously I am more than willing to take a reduction to try to see some of these projects go through. Uh, but that's up to you guys as the council. So we can discuss that more as we move forward. Um, what I did is asked a lot of our municipal peers in regards to what they're looking at for percentage increases. Uh, what I can tell you is in the past, uh, the majority of our municipal peers, I look at Lancaster, Bosco Bill, Prairie DuChene, uh, they have been anywhere between about one point five and two percent. Uh, Prairie DuChene has been about two percent every year. They've done an increase. Bosco Bill has typically tried to follow whatever the CPI increases. So the Consumer Price Index. Um, looking at other municipalities that this year has been anywhere between two and four percent is kind of seeing the, the standard. Um, as well as three percent is the CPI. So that is kind of where we have. So that is kind of where we have looked at with that. So one of the things obviously is we've had a standardized one percent increase as we've done in years past. One of the things we're looking at proposing this year is obviously with the Wisconsin Professional Police Association, a wage increase of four percent to align with compensation plans. So by increasing the wage structure, this will assist us to remain competitive with other municipal organizations. This would have an impact to the budget of approximately twenty seven thousand, nine hundred. What I can tell you there is obviously now being here a year. We have run into situations where unfortunately we have lost officers or recruits because of cost. They are able to make more money in other places. Obviously, everybody is seeing that pretty much in all areas, not just with police. So that's why you're seeing some of these proposals is to try to remain competitive. With obviously the changing environment we're seeing just out in the private sector, that is impacting the public sector as well. So that's why you're seeing some of these proposals. The other thing that we're proposing in this budget is to have a step increase for all eligible employees and recognition of honoring the two thousand and sixteen city of Platteville Compensation Plan. So for some of you council members that were not a part of that, there was a compensation plan that was created in two thousand and sixteen that essentially talked about how there were steps that in order to try to continue to be competitive as municipality, we would need to do, you know, every year and look at a potential increase. Unfortunately, because of budget scenarios, we have only been able to really do that once since that plan has been established. So this is something to look at doing again, to try to tackle some of the issues that we've seen in regards to just again, being competitive in the market and ensuring that we're honoring that plan. That's one of the things we're putting in here. So that has an impact to the budget of thirty two thousand dollars there. The other thing we're looking at is increases to recreational seasonal staff wages to assist with staffing issues and to maintain competitive wages with other municipalities. This would have an impact to the budget of ten thousand, five hundred dollars. One of the main reasons we're trying to do this is on all the calls I've been on and talking with obviously Director Peters. This has become more of a statewide issue as well as a national issue in regards to lifeguards, our pool staff, just our parking rec staff in general. Unfortunately, it is harder and harder to recruit those positions and to also actively pay those positions. So we're hoping by being able to do this, we can continue to maintain that quality staff that we have had as well as continue to actively recruit. The last piece on here again is to add dispatch and add a dispatch shift differential pay of fifty cents per designated night hours to maintain competitive wages with other municipalities. Again, this has an impact to the budget of one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. So as you can see, what I have proposed so far going into the budget or not any new additional staff increases. It is really focusing on the staff that we have. And trying to ensure that we continue to be competitive, that we continue to be able to retain our staff. Because obviously if we can't, there's two things, either you know, we are going to lose that staff. Or potentially it is going to continually be a struggle and eventually we are going to have to improve those rates in order to stay there. What I have put in here then next are some potential budgetary increases that the council can consider. As well as some things we could look at to potentially decrease the tax rate as well. So some additional things that can be considered if the council would so choose is the addition of a police department, part-time front desk assistant. This would be an impact to the budget of approximately twenty thousand dollars. Also, the addition of museum staffing support for operations, this would be an impact to the budget of approximately eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And then one of the things obviously that we have talked about that we would like to do is the addition of an agenda creation software to increase city communication potentials. This would have an impact to the budget of approximately fifteen thousand dollars. I think this is something that definitely we will need in the future, but trying to again, keep our tax rate as relatively you know, fiscally responsible as we can and looking at things that we need to do. These items were not included in my recommendations, but that is something obviously as we talk about as we move forward. If there are items that as the council, you feel really should be represented, we can talk about how we can, you know, maneuver some of those items around. Some of the things potentially that we could look at then is in regards to revenue increases that obviously would help reduce the tax rate. So one of those would be the increase in the pool admission fees, which would increase revenue figures and obviously decrease the amount of levy that would need to be done. So currently the cost for daily pass is three dollars, which is forecasted to bring in about twenty five thousand dollars in revenue. So that would equate to roughly about eight thousand, three hundred and thirty three individuals that have to pass through the pool in a year. Again, this is just a ballpark number. This is something that could be discussed in more detail. But if you think about it, if we were to increase that rate to let's say six dollars, that would generate almost an additional twenty five thousand dollars in revenue. So that's something where we have to look at the pros and cons of that because again, three dollars, if you're a family, depending on how many kids you have. If you're sending them, that's not terrible. You're talking six dollars, you know, it's kind of figuring out what is that benchmark of what could be and what couldn't. The same thing could be talked about. We could also review other municipal fee charges increases. And that's something that obviously staff is going to be doing here as we approach the rest of the budget to looking at areas that potentially we could increase those costs, which would then result in decreasing the levy. So one thing to consider obviously as council members is in order to reduce either increase the levy or decrease the levy by one percent. That equates to forty seven thousand dollars. So that's kind of the ballpark you have to think about where if you want to reduce the tax rate by a percentage. We either have to, we have to cut something by forty seven thousand. Vice versa, if you add things to the budget that are going to be forty seven thousand dollars, that will increase it by a percentage. So just something to keep in mind as we kind of go forward here and look at the overall operating side of things. Some of the things that are still pending, obviously in this budget that staff is still waiting on. Our property liability insurance renewal could change. So that could either go down or up. So we're still waiting on those figures. We're still waiting on the state municipal service aid payment. So that potentially if there is more there, that would obviously help and impact the budget. And right now our statement of assessment is currently using a projection. So we have not received that yet. But we have gone with a very conservative assessment, which basically is going to be very similar to what we had last year. And that's some of the challenges we obviously dealt with this budget where we saw an equalized value growth of about five percent. We're estimating our assessed value is going to be very flat. So with that, it does make it very difficult to just even maintain the status quo when our assessed value pretty much is flat. As you, as anybody knows, as we've been talking about with projects, everything is in turmoil right now and costing more. So that puts us a little bit already behind the eight ball. So just something obviously as we continue throughout this budget, we'll look at those and update those and kind of a plan for those accordingly much in advance going on there. So then what we tried to do is just give you a breakdown of some of the key increases and decreases that we saw that were greater than ten thousand dollars. So operational expense increases, one of the big ones obviously we're seeing is health insurance this year. Over the last couple of years, we've actually been pretty fortunate. We've either seen, I think last year we saw about sixty six thousand dollars in reductions. That was because they did not increase our rates. They actually kept them at zero. But then also with position retirements and with changes, we actually saw people either taking a different plan or less plans. So we saw a reduction. Unfortunately, we're seeing a little bit of a difference, which isn't a bad thing. Obviously with our employees having kids, that's great for families. That does affect the plan though, because then obviously they're changing plans. We also are seeing because of the fact that we have seen reductions over the last couple of years. They are allowed to go eight percent is what we have as a cap with our contract. They're doing that because of the fact that over the last couple of years, we have not really seen significant increases. So obviously you can see right there, if you think about it with forty seven thousand dollars increasing the levy by a percentage, you've got seventy six thousand dollars in increases right there.
And are we with courts?
Correct. Yep. So one of the things obviously that we are going to be looking at next year is it's that time to kind of do a full on our fee process or review to make sure that we're still getting the best price and kind of looking at how that plays out. So that's something that definitely will be occurring next year. OE gray, what you're going to see here is there was obviously forty seven thousand dollars that was not previously in our budget. But one of the things to remember there is that is being offset by revenue. So that basically is a revenue neutral move there. The enterprise vehicle leases, again, that's something that was moved from the capital improvement plan to this. So that is being offset a little bit primarily by the funds that are not being funded by the capital. It's going into the general fund there. Room tax allocation, one of the positive things there is we're hoping obviously as COVID continues to kind of move forward that we are seeing more people utilizing hotel rooms. So that there is why you're seeing the potential, we're budgeting for an increase there. Again, that's offset by revenue. Salt contract, unfortunately, this is one of the things that we don't have control over. It's going up. And it's going up pretty substantially. And that's again, just because of the market and everything we're dealing with. We're seeing about a thirty five thousand dollar increase in that. This is where obviously the step increase for eligible employees is about a thirty two thousand dollar potential there. The four percent increase for police officers is twenty seven thousand, nine hundred. The one percent increase for all non-union employees is eighteen thousand, five hundred. We have a gubernatorial election coming up. So obviously that is something where we are going to see an increase in the budget in order to deal with that. Again, that line item always fluctuates depending on the year that we're dealing with. So when years we don't have that, we can reduce it. In years that we do, we have to bring it back up. There are some museum operating expenses that we did increase to try to assist in the kind of current momentum that the museum has had in regards to its long-term comprehensive planning, marketing. So that's why we're seeing some increases there. As we talked about property and liability insurance, we've seen some increases there that may change. The library staff restructure equated to about eleven thousand dollars, but I do want to preface that again, that is being offset by their budget. So they had some increases, they made some changes overall in their budget from the revenue side as well as the expenditures to kind of count for that. So that also is a budgetary neutral move. And then again, the pool seasonal wage increases was ten thousand, five hundred dollars. So then again, some specific operating expense decreases that we saw that were greater than ten thousand. The financial outlay was reduced by seventeen thousand, five hundred. The senior center rent expense that was actually transitioned to OE Gray's specific revenue. So that's why that you're seeing that reduction there and street lighting as we continue to move towards LED. We continue to see reductions in the cost of that. So that's why that continues to be a pretty substantial decrease there. So that's definitely kudos to Howard and the rest of the DFW team for the work that they continue to do and kind of updating that and looking into those information. So then just to kind of go over again, some operational revenue increases that were greater than ten thousand dollars that we're looking at in the budget. Again, with OE Gray revenue, we've got about forty nine thousand, five hundred dollars that we're anticipating to be offset by the expenses. We have the transfer from the CIP fund for vehicle leases. So that was something that is definitely offsetting that cost that we're seeing there. Room tax again is shared with the chamber, but that's something that we are anticipating an increase. The township fire revenue. So these are the fire agreements that we're updating that we have been going to all the townships and I'll be doing that again tomorrow. So that we're anticipating an increase. Museum grants, they're anticipating seventeen thousand dollars there. And with kind of the return of students and with our population and with people again, driving. We're looking at parking violations potentially going up as well as court penalties as well. That just kind of going back to the historic of what we saw previously. So again, some operational revenue decreases that are greater than ten thousand. Unfortunately, because of everything we've seen with COVID, interest rates have obviously dropped substantially. So historically we were getting some very good interest on a lot of our revenue that was sitting in some of our local investment pools and different things like that. We're just not anticipating we're going to see that. So unfortunately we have had to reduce that. And again, transportation aids, we have seen a reduction. That's a little bit of a double edged sword. That's where you know, the more obviously work that we do in regards to road replacements, the more transportation aid we see. But as we've talked about tonight, the downfall to that is obviously debt. So the more debt roads we take on, technically we'll get more transportation. But in order to stay within our policy and within what we need to do for the city, we are continuing to see a slight reduction in regards to that. So this is just kind of a recap of everything that was talked about in the last meeting with the CIP. So if you recall, these are the projects that were recommended to be funded primarily in full, either through utilizing capital project tax levy, intergovernmental revenues, general fund transfers or other sources of funding. The next slide here just kind of shows you specifically those projects then that were recommended to be reduced or not funded in full. Again, trying to stay within our debt limit and also stay within our financial policy. That's what you have there. This then is the water and sewer side of the CIP, which will be discussed obviously in more detail tomorrow during their financial management plan. So again, depending kind of that review and looking into that, these numbers may change. But essentially we're showing the projects that we anticipate to be funded by either intergovernmental revenues, other sources or with water revenue bonds and sewer revenue bonds. As well as what projects then specifically we recommended not be funded again, just to be financially prudent and stay within our policies. So then the next slide here shows you specifically the ARPA funded recommendation projects. So as you can see, there was phase one that has already been approved by the council that fell into the capital improvement plan. And then the items that have been recommended to be utilized for phase two. Again, these projects are estimates. So we'll kind of get more to that, but this kind of shows you the breakdown of how the city is anticipating using about that one point two billion dollars we got from ARPA funding. So then this next slide just kind of shows you an overall summary of where things are at. So from the general fund, we're looking at about a six point nine percent increase from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty one, about a hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars there. The taxi bus essentially is going from forty five thousand dollars to where in twenty twenty, we didn't levy anything. That had a lot to do with the federal grants that we were getting with COVID. So essentially we did not have to fund anything because of all those grants we were receiving. And now that we no longer have those, that's why you're seeing that change. Debt service, again, sticking with our policy there, we're looking at about a four point seven percent increase in that. And then capital improvement, as we've talked about, using about a hundred and ninety six thousand, six hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in levy. That is a reduction. So again, that's something we're going to have to talk about as we kind of walk through our financial plan for future years. Eventually, you know, as we talked about, if we keep using the general fund, we're going to run out of that resource. So we have to kind of plan and look at specific projects. So again, overall, we're looking at a total levy increase of about three percent. So where that puts us right now is our mill rate in twenty twenty one was eight dollars and about eight dollars and two cents. With this plan, if this were to move forward, it would be an increase in the tax rate of about eight dollars, about twenty seven cents. So what that would mean, that's per one hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. So an owner of a home of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would pay one thousand, two hundred and forty four dollars in city property taxes, up forty one dollars from twenty twenty one. Or essentially they would be three dollars and forty two cents per month. So again, this number will fluctuate as we start to get more information in, obviously we're hopeful that it will go down and that it will not be that high. But that's kind of currently where everything that is being proposed that you will see in the coming meetings here kind of puts us at right now. One of the questions I think that was asked by council member Shanley was kind of a history of looking back at where has our tax rate been in previous years. So I was able to find a document that we have been tracking since nineteen ninety eight in regards to where our tax rate has been. Because obviously one of the concerns that is present from residents is that we do have a high tax rate. As you can see, it is not as high as it has definitely been in the past. In two thousand and four, we were actually at thirteen dollars and twenty cents was our tax rate per one hundred thousand. It has reduced since those years. And as you can see, it has been, you know, in twenty eighteen, we were about eight thirteen. We then dropped that to seven, seventy three. And since then have been kind of, you know, consistently climbing to handle the operations of everything that we're looking at. So again, that's pretty much kind of the brief overview of everything that you're seeing. So our next meeting obviously is Tuesday, October nineteenth. What you can see in this budget is this budget pretty much is not, you know, there's nothing. I'll use it. There is nothing really sexy about this budget. It is basically maintaining the status quo. So it is investing obviously in the employees that we have. We went through multiple meetings where I can tell you that our departments have told us that, you know, there is definitely the need for additional staff to help with that operation. But as we can see in here, you know, and trying to make sure that we are continuing to be financially solvent. Those changes, those proposals are potentially there, but we're not put into this. What we really looked at doing was trying to invest in the, obviously the staff that we have. So that's why you're seeing the majority of the changes are related to that. Any questions there?
Do you think kind of seeing these numbers here in terms of the assessed tax rate? Definitely from, you know, it looks like two thousand to two thousand and four, it went up quite a bit. Do you, do we think that that is kind of what started giving Platteville a reputation of having high taxes? And then it kind of slowly went down or?
Yeah, I mean, so I think it definitely, that's definitely a part of it. Again, I wasn't here for that time, so I don't want to speak for what was going on. But I think the, the key question that, that I would say with anybody and you know, as all of us as taxpayers, it comes down to a question. It is, we're presented with the information. So what we have right now is you have the budget and you see what's there. The question is, if you want to reduce that, it comes down to a question of what you're doing. Either you are going to reduce services or you're going to essentially not provide increases for those services. And you have to understand what the, there's a cost benefit analysis to that. So if we're, you know, going to reduce the amount of increases we're going to provide staff, that's going to lead to something. Either eventually staff is going, you're going to not be able to retain that talent of quality employees that we have because they're going to go elsewhere. I mean, that's reality. If anybody's in that situation, that's what they're going to do. The other scenario then is if you are going to cut something, what is that? You know, what are those services that residents are willing to not have? And that is a tough conversation because I think if you ask any resident, it's going to be different every time. There are going to be some residents that feel it should be this. There are going to be some that are going to feel it's going to be that. I think there's certainly things, you know, that we can always look at and look at reality. But that is what we do as But that is what we do as staff kind of during the budget process is we look at, you know, what areas we can cut, what areas we can trim. To still try to provide a high quality operation for the city. And that's reality is as council members, if you know, the decision is that we're going to look at cutting something. Then the reality of the public is they have to understand a service is going to go down. Whether that's garbage, whether that's, you know, we're cutting grass less, whether we're doing other services, whether we're snow plowing. And there's a cost benefit to that is when you get the complaints. Well, if you don't want to raise taxes. We can't, we can't provide that service to the expectation of this. Or it's an understanding of this is what it costs to run the day-to-day operations and if we understand that as an increase, that's what it is. So I think it varies. I think as you've seen here, there were probably times where they had to do it because they wanted to provide a service or they were doing something. And then other times they realized, no, we have to go down and they made a change or they made a sacrifice. Sometimes that has to do with, you know, the way of how things are working is maybe they got more revenue that year and they were allowed to do something. Or they didn't, they had to make a reduction. So there's a lot of variables.
I just want to make a comment to the. As we're going through this, it's, it's part of the consideration and, and to your point. About the public perception is that what we're talking about is literally the city's. Tax, not.
Correct.
A property tax bill that they're going to get.
Correct.
And that is always an issue and, and I think maybe. Part of that public perception is, is that they say, okay, well. I get it. I have a house that's worth 150,000 in Platteville. And you have one that's valued at 150,000 in Belmont. Platteville's is way higher. Without considering the, the. Yep. We have the, the public school and we have Southwest Tech. So as we're going through this, I think it, it would be beneficial. For us to have, I would like to see those numbers sitting because when we do a final approval of this. We have to. Be aware that when, for feedback, that when, when. Our citizens get their tax bill, they're going to come back and say. You weren't talking about this at all. Yes, we.
Sure.
You know, that's, I just think that that's important because even when I looked here. When you see the mill rate. And an owner of a $150,000 home is $1,200, I'm going, wow, what it, I'm looking at mine and it's like, oh yeah. But that's the city's portion.
Right. Because the city has been charged with collecting for the county, the state. I don't think we do the technical college system anymore because they don't tax levy, I don't think anymore. And the school. They do.
But we, do they? So it's five taxing, taxing districts.
And we used to have to collect a little bit for the state.
But now we don't. Okay. But you're right, Kathy, because. The amount of tax collected in Lafayette County, which Belmont pays may be radically different than the amount of tax collected by Grant County. Which Grant County pays. So it's really hard to, it's really hard to compare. Apples to apples because you have so many different taxing entities who have many taxing. Who, who have goals. That they're trying to implement, you know, and maybe they're not getting the cash flow that they need or maybe. They, maybe they got in trouble with their own financial management plan. You know, I think for a long time, Grant County was paying for an incinerator that never worked. Now I think that we may have been, I think we may have finally paid for the incinerator. That was put in, that never worked, that we still had to pay for, for like 20 years. So you're right. And that's one of the reasons we always say, and your tax bill very clearly show. The amount that's being collected for the city, the amount that's being collected for the school, the amount that's being collected for the county. The amount that's being collected for Southwest Tech. It very, very clearly shows what your city taxes are. And so, yeah, I get a little. Testy with people.
Yeah.
Yeah. That, that would be what I say. I get a little testy with people when they say the city collects so much tax and I say, what don't you want us to do? Do you not want your garbage picked up? Do you not want your leaves cleaned? You know? And that, that is my point is.
Right, right.
Just reinforcing. That, that we're, we're, we're really kind of talking two different things here.
Right.
We're talking about the city's budget, not what the property owner's tax bill is going to look like.
Right, yep.
I have no clue with that because we don't control it.
Right.
Yeah.
And that, yeah, and I think that's one of the things too, that is, that sometimes it's hard that you hear from people as well. Why is, you know, why is our tax rate so high? We're in other places, whether it's, you know, Belmont or a township. Well, you have to consider too, when you think about that, think of all this, it's a council president's, to us this point, it's right on. It's think of all the services that we do fund. You know, we've got the library, we have the museum, we have the pool, we have recreation, we have those things, whereas a lot of those other places. Don't have that because of their proximity to us. So it plays into it, but and then it's a, yeah, it's the conversation of. It's a hard to do that apples, apples comparison, but that's what everybody wants to do. It's, well, it's, it's to that point. It's okay. If, if you want it to be lower. It's the, what service level are you willing to reduce and understand what that impact is?
Or what fee are you willing to?
Or what fee are you willing to increase?
Or what new revenue source can you dream up?
Right.
Well, and what I've appreciated being on council and, and going through these budget. I think this is either my second or. Budget cycle, but just being able to look at everything, you know, all, all, if not most of. The money is going directly back into our community. It's not like, you know, when, when you look at like a state. You know, budget or a federal budget, like all these different entities and stuff like. I feel like with the municipality, you know, our money really is going back into our community. It's not like being used for. You know, all of this other stuff as maybe like a state or a huge federal budget. So.
Okay, questions on the budget presentation? Otherwise I think that we should set the time.
Yes, so that was going to be the last piece.
For next Tuesday. And in that the Historic Preservation Commission has previously scheduled their meeting for six o'clock. I say we schedule our meeting for seven.
That would work.
And question for Joe, did you do any changing yet?
But we're, we're trying to reschedule the commission's meeting to Thursday night. So I've sent out emails and I haven't got a response back from anybody yet, so. Nothing to do. So we, we're trying to eliminate the conflict completely because we don't know how long each.
I mean, so how long have you given people to respond to eliminate the conflict? Cause we didn't, I mean. I think we want to set this meeting time so that it can be, you know, if we. Publish anything that it's not, that it's, that it's in the news correctly. So I would believe that we should set this no later than Thursday morning. So I don't, I don't know what your timeline is, but I'm saying that Thursday morning.
Correct.
We need to know if this is a six o'clock meeting or a seven o'clock meeting.
Yeah. So I, yeah, I guess the question would be for the council, if we did have to push it back to seven, is there any concern with that?
Okay. If there wasn't a conflict, would we be able to push like six o'clock to 5:30? If we didn't have a conflict with the other meeting?
Does that work for you guys?
I don't know. I'd have to check a schedule. I, yeah, I don't. You don't have football next week.
I do. It's our last game. So selfishly, I'm, that's kind of my plug for 5:30.
Oh, because what time's your game?
6:30 and then they go till about 7:30.
Pass your plug. Okay, so I guess there would maybe be a plug for five o'clock. I don't know how people would feel about five o'clock. Five?
Okay.
Five?
Can you make that work?
Five o'clock, five? Then can you make that work, five?
No.
You can do it. It's not easy. I know. It's a one time. I mean, five o'clock is a, is an unusual and difficult time if you're. Have family obligations at all, but. I, so I guess we'll push it to, to five and then we'll schedule a one hour meeting and if your HPC meeting doesn't get changed. Then that's fine too. Okay. So five o'clock it is next Tuesday, the 19th. And at that meeting, we will see. Line item budgets by department.
Correct.
So you'll have even more.
Details.
More detail to look at in terms of. Expenditures by department.
Yep.
We might get out by eight.
No, I think we're going to be out later than, I mean, we have a guy here who's going to.
6:30.
Yeah, he's.
Deadline is there.
So that's that. We're going to be done because Jason's got to go coach his last season's football, football?
Yeah, flag football.
Flag football, so. Okay, I think there's one other item on our agenda.
Second.
I didn't hear who motioned.
Motion to adjourn from Eileen, second from Lynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Candace, you can put that down as unanimous.